We're gonna start back from the top. Thank you guys for joining us. Today is Tuesday, April 30th at 5:00 PM. We're gonna be going over the 20th District Court's 260 Fund and 105 Fund. We'll also be going over the CDBG. We'll be going through the Department of Public Works, also known as DPW, the Building and Maintenance, Major and Local Streets, Water and Sewer. Michelle, our courts, honorable judges, thank you for being here with us today. The floor is yours.
Do you want the page numbers first?
Let's go through the quick pages.
Yes.
If you don't mind, we can start off with the 20th District Court's 260 Fund and 105 Fund.
20th District Court is page 5, then 42, 43, 44.
Okay.
And then 36 and 37. And that's for all of those funds.
Okay, so that's just the courts, correct?
That is just the courts.
Wow.
Yep.
You're blessed for our courts. What do we got next?
CDBG.
Yep.
Is page 34 and 35.
Okay.
DPW, page 25. Building Maintenance, page 19. Major and Local Streets, 38, 39, 40, and 41.
38.
39, 40.
41.
Yes.
Okay.
And then Water and Sewer, 57 through 63.
57, 58, 59, 60, 61, 62, 63.
That is correct.
All right. Thank you, guys. Sorry for that. So council members, before I begin, I did get a phone call from the councilwoman Denise Minowski Maxwell. She did inform me that she's not feeling too well, blamed it on Councilman Ahmad, saying that he was wearing a mask yesterday, now she's got the sniffles and doesn't wanna do a Councilman Ahmad thing.
So I think he's not coming in tomorrow, huh?
You know what? Luckily, we don't have anything tomorrow. So, you know, she wanted me to just announce that she's sorry that she couldn't be here today. She's not, she's feeling under the weather, but we can go ahead and proceed.
Okay. Starting on page 5, it's the District Court Department. The first two lines are related to salaries. Those are reflected in your personnel budget. There is a slight difference between what we've calculated, and then Michelle did have some updated information. There's a difference of about $4,000. We can put the updated number in the budget.
So where is the updated? Is it just all in all, or is it single item, line item?
So it's mainly in the Deputy Court Clerk line. That was a little bit different, and then the MIDC subtraction was also a little bit different.
Okay.
So we can adjust that. It's 935 versus 931 in total.
And that's on the personnel, 935?
Yes.
I mean, even there's a proposed budget for the Deputy Clerk. It says 362,020.
Yeah, that's what the discrepancy was, was there, because we have four new hires.
Can you give her the mic? I'm sorry.
Yeah, of course.
Angela, Angela, do we have more than one mic here, or no? Thank you.
Okay, that's because of, we had four new hires, full-time hires, that started at a lower salary, just as of January of this year. So that number was based upon the old Deputy Court Clerk. So the 362,120 is now 320,244. So that's what that, for the Deputy Court Clerks, we basically have two tiers now of two different salaries.
Awesome.
Okay, so that's, that's where that falls.
Thank you.
Okay.
So that's 935. What was the change?
935.
You have the number right there.
019, right?
Is that what?
On 917.
935, 019. Yep.
It's actually in your email.
So we'll make that adjustment.
Okay.
Part-time, we have 188,000, an increase from last year because they're expecting a higher caseload. Overtime, we kept it 7,000. Clothing, kept at 1,200. The hospital and life insurance, like all the other departments, had that inflationary increase. General Government Pension at 258. Fringe Benefits, which is your FICA, again, at 90,000. Supplies are 43,000, and that's just an average of the prior three years. Utilities at 87,000. Dues and Memberships at 4,500. Court, oh, was there a question? I thought I heard something. Sorry.
Page 5?
Yeah. Page 5, yes.
Our numbers are different. Go ahead.
Okay.
What are you seeing as different, Councilman? Go ahead.
Maybe he sees page 12 on the personnel. He sees page 12 on the different.
So it's actually page 5, and on the personnel page, it's page 12? So I didn't...
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead. Court fees of 60,000. Contractual Services is 115, just a slight increase there in case management. Tuition reimbursement, 2,500. MIDC grant expenditures, so that's one of the, a couple of the attorneys for MIDC grant, that's 10,000. Repair and Maintenance of 73,000, just keeping in line with the prior year budget. Travel and Education, 2,500. And legal library fees at 19,950, just a slight increase in library charges.
So I have a question about the maintenance and repairs. What maintenance and repairs do we, does the court need currently?
Well, we are 35% of the Justice Center, so if there's something that goes through, our portion is 35% of whatever it may be. And we also have repair of computers, copy machines, printers, anything that should go wrong. We still have repairs, too, on our side of the building.
No, what I'm asking is 70, is 73,000 enough for repairs?
Oh, is it enough? I mean, over past spending, I mean, if something comes, we've come close. Last year, we were slightly above. Every year, it's different. Like, right now, we have a rooftop unit that is not working on our side of the building, and I understand...
Told us about that yesterday.
Yeah, and the way I understand, this rooftop unit, there's three of them, this rooftop unit, I've been told, is my responsibility because it's on our side of the building.
So the rooftop unit that's actually out is on the court side, not the police department?
Ours is totally not working right now, yes. We have no air conditioning.
Interesting.
So, I mean, this is, would be for the following year. Have you guys...
Well, right now, they're working on it. I've been told by Mike Blackburn this morning that they ordered the bearings for it to have it replaced, and this is to the tune it's gonna be probably like $5,500 just for this type of fix, but I don't know if that's, you know, if it's gonna go out again. It has gone out a couple times on us already, so...
And also, like, from what we understood yesterday, the unit's about 20 years old.
Oh, yeah. I mean...
For 20 years old, why don't we get quotes or get pricing on what we believe it would cost for replacement, and then that way, we could potentially add it to the show's budget, and so that way, you guys can go out for bids, and when I have a...
I was told that unit would be like $250,000 to replace.
Being a bit excessive on it, but you guys said you share 35% of the cost?
Yes.
Yeah, but that's...
Art's at 26, remember? Hold on, he's hurt.
Is that for that request?
Well, they said it's on our side, so I've been told that I will get the bill.
Michelle, line 101, 130818 is 116,000, did you say, or 100%?
115.
I'm sorry. My math is off.
Way off.
Yeah.
So you're saying you wanna bump it up?
You'd have to bump it up an additional 87,000.
Well, let's see, know if we can get it to work before installation.
Yeah.
Did somebody take a look at it?
Yeah, but there's three units.
They've ordered the, they said it's bearings as of right now. They thought it was the motor was totally shot, but now I've been told that it's, it's the bearings.
How often is this one going out?
Well, I mean...
Probably just turned it on.
How often would you say it goes out? I mean, at least, I mean, we were about this time last year where we lost air conditioning as well.
Well, you guys just probably turned it on, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It was cold last week.
True, that's probably. It just came on, and we came in, and it was, oh, I think it was Thursday of last week.
Isn't that the fact?
You know, I had a question, too, here. Don't we pay magistrates in the city? How many do we have?
Right now, we have one magistrate because, as we know, Judge Ellisell is no longer with us as a magistrate, so, and as of right now, I mean, we haven't replaced a second magistrate. It is budgeted in here in the contractual services, because we have intention, so it is part of the, in the contractual.
Okay. So, I'm sorry, one more question. Does the courthouse also use a boiler system?
We share it with the building, yeah, so the, and I've heard the boiler system is on, is in failure as well, so, is that with the hot water tank? We have everything going up one time, it seems like, in that building. Yeah. Oh, and then we had a leak, yeah, in our women's bathroom. One of our stalls, the water's turned off right now, because we came in, was it last weekend, to, the floor was soaked, and we don't know, so we turned off the valve, they replaced it, but it was still leaking, but our, it was leaked all the way through.
Are we doing any preventive maintenances on any of these properties, or any, anything at the Justice Center? And I'm not blaming any of you guys, I'm just asking, like, are people, is there maintenance going in, and somebody's, like, taking a look at anything instead of going in and saying, "Oh, my God, let's call somebody. It's leaking everywhere"?
We just have nine chambers in the separate office.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've had many leaks.
Is it through the roof?
Either the roof or the heating and cooling.
Yeah, Mayor, can you turn your mic?
Let's save electricity. I don't wanna get my budget cut for electricity. No, there are, there actually, there's no preventative maintenance on anything in the city, so this is something we're trying to, yeah. So this is, this is one thing that we're lacking, is preventative maintenance on pretty much anything in the city at this point.
Are you trying to, are you trying to insinuate that's why you needed asset manager?
It's, hey, it's up to you guys.
I think, I think that's what we have to do.
I'm not insinuating anything. I'm just trying to tell you what we need. It's up to you guys to prove it.
Thanks, Mayor. I think it's an insinuation, but I think that's why we have Building and Maintenance. And so why don't we start, I mean, I don't know if you guys have access to our Building and Maintenance. You guys should take advantage of that.
We've had, we've had Building and Maintenance. We're still here.
Yeah, they come when I call, so if something happens, then we have Johnson controlling.
Okay. Councilman, you said you had a couple of questions?
So, yeah.
Speak into the mic, please.
Is it also, there's a water tank leaking?
I, I understand it's in the basement, yeah, and I don't think it's on my side of the building, but it's on the police side, but it is in the basement, and I have heard it is leaking, so I have not seen it firsthand.
Sad, because that building is beautiful.
It is beautiful.
Like, how media?
It's not media, but it's, if you...
Judge, why don't you do this, or Michelle, why don't you give us a list of things that you feel like, and probably the most severe, that you feel like needs to be, be done as soon as possible, and just kinda go through the list, and like, hey, this would be nice, this would be nice, this is, like, extremely important, the most least important thing that you think. Like, I mean, if you're telling me the judge's chamber is sitting in there, and, you know, it's, it's leaking.
You're right, it's, it's a beauty. And, you know, you start letting things go, and...
Yeah, I mean, war and tear happens, like, we, you know, we get that, but it's...
Yeah, well, we, we're gonna talk with, maybe Tifa can help as well with the carpeting in the building, since it is...
Okay.
You know, so that's a conversation, but right now, with the air conditioner not working and the humidity, this is where we see the problems, because what's happening is we have basically down our hallway, speed bumps. So the carpet's bumping, you know, and that's, for women, could be a very tripping hazard with heels.
Anybody?
Yes.
Would you be aware of...
We're just waiting, you know, but when the air's on, I mean, right now, it had flattened up once, you know, the humidity, but the humidity's bringing it all up because it's just laying on cement, and the glue is no longer sticking.
Yeah, good, Councilman.
By any chance, would you be aware of any state grant, maybe, that can help with the court side?
I don't know. For those type of issues, we could, I mean, we could look out there and see, but I don't know that they would do grants for the building issues. Yeah, because it's cosmetic.
Yeah, they're probably mostly not gonna do it.
Right.
All right.
Yeah.
Maybe this budget, we can find a way to...
What about CDBG?
Governmental buildings are not eligible for, for the state funding.
Thank you. Okay, guys, we're gonna get to, Michelle, if you can get that list to me.
Okay, sure.
Just email it, and I can share with the council members.
Okay.
Let us go through the rest of it.
Do we wanna move on to 42 now?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Well, no, you wanna finish, did we finish all the line items?
That was the last of the line items.
Okay.
So then, if we don't have any more questions on that, we can move on to page 42.
Well, I actually have one question.
Okay.
We have capital outlay, they requested $42,000, and then they were given $0.
They did. They requested $42,000 for computers for the court, as with all the other capital outlay, it was removed.
For computers? We're updating all the computers in the city. Why isn't the court getting them updated?
We can add a note, if you'd like.
Well, I mean, we wanna be, you know, understanding, Mayor, is there a reason why they weren't eligible for the 42,000?
Also, Chair, from my understanding, that they wanted to upgrade the computers, but somehow, somebody didn't wanna upgrade them.
No, we need to upgrade, because I was told...
Please speak into the mic, please. I'm so sorry, guys.
I was told by David Cooper that Windows 10 will no longer be maintained at the end of the year, supported, so we're gonna have to go to Windows 11. So that's why I budgeted, because our computers went from Windows 7, upgraded to Windows 10. There's no way they're gonna be able to have the memory or the capability to upgrade to Windows 11. So I got the prices from David Cooper, you know, for some of us to get laptops and desktops, you know, to do what needs to be do, as well as docking stations, and it came to about that price, with the prices he gave me.
That, I think, what should be added in. So I'd like to increase that at 42,000. So if you can give me the new updated number on that, I mean, I don't think we should be telling our courts, you know, you guys need your computer. I would hope that, you know... So can you give me that number, Michelle, real quick? I'm gonna, I'm gonna want this to be added. I know we've cut a few things off, like, we got rid of the part-time position with the emergency management, so I think, if you're eliminating 80 here, and you're giving 42 here, this is something I'd like to see at 42,000.
Okay. I'll, I'll definitely add that as a note. Did you want the new total?
Yeah, can you give me that new total amount?
Um, hold on, I do have to do some math here, because we changed the salaries.
8252, plus 4,000. 4,500. Where is that number? I'm sorry.
2,243,192 is in the requested budget.
Well, no, but they're short, they, remember, they were off on the typo with the 3,500? 4,500.
So it's 2228640.
Thank you.
Of course.
Michelle, I hope we can get those computers, and they gotta be up and running, and then if you can find a way to also, with the old computers, maybe we can donate those to, like, a local nonprofit or whatnot, or we can use them somewhere else in the city.
Nope, that's fine. They're working.
What do you mean?
Most of the court on Zoom.
I'm saying, I said, since we're, since we just gave you new computers, donate them to, like, a local nonprofit. Well, they would pull out their hard drives.
Yeah, Zoom's a great convenience.
Now, there are grants for ITs updated to the D or G. If you can get them some, then the 42 will stay, and the budget won't be, so you get to...
Okay, let me know. I'm gonna hold you to that one. I know you're good for it.
I would talk to Derek, to...
Okay.
And he's very good, as I heard, you know, he's a accountant, so...
Thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna proceed here. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks to move on, of course, to page 42.
Okay.
And that is the MIDC. That's the grant that you get. Yep, 150,000 is for this year. If you go to the next page, there's related expenditures for the MIDC, and those are your attorneys, and then there's one staff person that's also on there.
44?
Yep. So page 44 is, actually, that's just the end of the fund. So it, it just shows that you are going to be adding $26,000 to fund balance.
Okay.
And then 36, yep. That's your building.
Hang on one second, Michelle.
Yeah, no problem.
You can go ahead.
It's your Building Authority Fund. So a portion of each ticket goes to the Building Authority, and that is what that $60,000 is for.
Each ticket as in, like, speeding ticket?
Yeah, so every new case filing that we have, like, a traffic ticket or misdemeanor first, first time when it's filed, when they're paid, $10 out of each of those tickets goes to this building fund. So this is 60,000, I feel is low. I mean, if tickets increase, I mean, I, I project maybe 90,000, but rather say, okay, 60, but if we get higher, then great. If we don't, I mean, last year, we had like 138,000, you know, but it's based upon...
I'm seeing a decrease in it, because we were initially in 2022, 2023, we're at 137,080. In 2023, 2024, we're at 108,000, and then we see this drastic drop to 60,000.
And that's also based upon tickets, you know, if tickets aren't written or filed with the court, then they're not being paid, therefore, the $10 isn't getting put into this fund, so... So that's, it's all based upon caseload.
Mayor, can we see ourselves, why that discussion later? Thank you.
And then on page 57, it's the related expenditures for that fund.
37, you mean?
Yes. Did I, did I say?
You said 57.
37, not 36.
37, yes.
I, I heard the councilman flipping, and it's right underneath us.
Oh, sorry.
Okay.
I guess I'm trying to go way ahead. 37.
Yeah.
Um, that's the related expenditures, and what that is, it's a transfer to Tifa for the debt payment for the Justice Center.
Okay. Any questions, council members? Hang on, Mr. Jamal, this is courts. I'm so sorry. I have to hold you off on that. Council members, any questions?
Because the $10 are put into the bond when it was issued, so that's offsetting the liability on Tifa. So it doesn't really, when it's decreased, revenue, it does not really affect the city budget, you know, unrestricted budget. It will actually increase our liability on Tifa. So whatever we don't collect from the ticketing, Tifa will be responsible for the bond payment.
Thank you.
That's the case. I just wanna just...
Thank you.
I was part of that.
Thank you. Anything else?
That's it for the court.
You guys have been adjourned?
Thank you. Thank you. And then I will, I will work on the list for you.
You know, before, when I was a kid, and I ran to get involved in being like an elected official, it was Judge David Turfey that I used to sit in the back in the Alzien's backyard. He'd give us speeches about how we're gonna win. We go pumped up, I'd walk like one block, and I'd be like, I'm gonna go Saturday, I'm done. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Take care.
Thank you. Michelle, thank you so much. Michelle, thank you so much. It's to Michelle, right?
I know, exactly.
Blessed.
It's confusing. Bye-bye. So the next one is CDBG.
All right. No, 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 we're gonna have you stay right here, sir.
Right here, right here, right?
Right here.
Next to Michelle.
I'd like them both, I'd like you both to sit up here.
Go, go. There's four of us here.
No, Mr. Baz doesn't have to sit down.
What's wrong? You don't gotta have four.
Um, let's hold for now. Yes.
Huh?
Yep.
All right, we'll be here.
Okay. Do we wanna wait for Mr. Constan to come back?
Uh, no, we're gonna be fine, but can we also get Mr. Bazzy up here as well?
Sure.
He's the chair.
I'd like you up here, Mr. Bazzy, please. For you, those who don't know, watching at home, or on Zoom, Mr. Bazzy has served our city for a little over 15 years. He's another individual, when I was, he lived down the block from my parents' house. I'd be watering the grass, and he'd be like, "Do you know who I am, amo?" And now here he stands before us in a budget hearing. So welcome, Mr. Bazzy. Welcome, Mr. Jamal.
So we all live in the same neighborhood.
So Jamal, we're gonna, we're gonna move forward. We're gonna listen to Michelle. We're going to page 34.
This is page 34 and 35. Yep, so we'll start at page 34. And so with the CDBG budget, just keep in mind that the categories that are budgeted for are what HUD is approving. So we'll get into that in the expenditures, but your revenues are $1 million this year for CDBG revenue, and then residential rehab revolving income is $100,000.
Thank you.
Project, yes, projected. It can also obviously go higher.
You can't slip up with Mr. Jamal, he's...
Or lower. I know. So then, if you go to page 35, it's the revenues, and the accounts for CDBG are based on project year.
Before, before we go forward.
Yes.
I, I, I quote a swore that this body, one year ago, Michelle, I don't, actually, you were here one year ago, right?
Yeah.
So I don't know if you recall.
I wasn't here.
You weren't here. You weren't, you weren't, you weren't blessing us with your presence, but you were here.
Yes.
And I'm probably sure you, the most important thing was our budget. I don't, I don't know why. I don't, I don't think, no, I don't think anybody has an answer as to why the council wasn't honored when we asked for the raises for the CDBG, which it's not coming out of the general ledger. It's not being paid, even though it's being paid through taxpayers' money. It's not really our, through our taxpayers' money, residents of suburban heights. It's the entire federal taxpayers' money. Or, or, you get what I'm saying?
I do.
We have requested that these individuals got their pay. We requested that the raise went to the director. I, I don't know why the administration and HR, or whomever the mayor did, feels that, you know what, I don't care what council says, I'm not giving them, I'm not approving this, or I'm telling them not to approve it. They deserve their money, and they also deserve their retro pay. And it's, it's a damn shame that this is still happening. It's a damn shame that council is continuing to be ignored, and this is why the city and the, the city council and administration just can't see eye to eye. It's dumb things like this, that you can't just honor the council for. And I think it's the most tedious, the most childish act of, of, of playing when it comes to you messing with people's livelihood. You know, these people work for our city. One year ago, Council Chairman Dave Abdullah, Councilman Muscat, Councilman Wanso, myself, Councilman Ahmad, Councilwoman Breyer, and Councilman Constan approved unanimously to give them money, and yet, nothing has been done, nothing has been changed. Everything, it's like a game. And, and gentlemen, I am sorry, because it wasn't this council that wanted this. I still believe you guys are entitled to that money, because it was added to the budget. But if this is the type of gameplay that's gonna happen, then don't bring us any approval for any increases for any director on any budget moving forward, because if the dumb games are gonna be played like this, then we're gonna play the games right back at 'em. Please continue. Mr. Jamal, I don't need a statement, please.
No statement.
And I, I don't need you to, I'm just letting Michelle go on with the budget.
She wanna give you time to speak about it?
I will, I will let you speak at the end. Thank you.
Okay. As I mentioned, HUD has specific categories for what they are approving for the projects, and it is based on a project year. So this year, we have the various projects in the budget for this year's projects, and then you have a planning and administration line, which includes any of the salaries.
Line items, I'm sorry. They see community development.
So if we start here, we have housing rehab for 2024. That's 900 dot 9024?
Yeah, but I'm seeing that there's nothing in there.
So...
Housing rehab is $0, housing rehab is $0.
So, yep, so go over to the very last column.
Before we do that.
Yeah.
Can we go up to... Why did we budget for housing? Why did we budget for housing rehab? And maybe I'm just reading this wrong. Is there nothing to read? Is there like, what's going on here? Because I know in the past, we've always had housing rehab.
Yes, so housing rehab, we're budgeting three hundred and twenty-four thousand for.
There's two housing rehab.
So each, so each year
There's, yeah.
will have its own line item. So the reason why.
Twenty-one, four, three, eight has zero dollars.
That is last year's, or this current year's housing rehab. So that would be the grant that they're currently in. And HUD would ask that you use a different line item for every year. So you won't, anything that's budgeted this year, you won't see a budget for last year.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so the housing rehab this year, they're budgeting three hundred and twenty-four thousand. Code enforcement, a hundred thousand. General planning and admin, two hundred and twenty. Van Houten Park, um, three hundred and fifty thousand. And then senior citizens services of a hundred thousand. And then there's the Fair Housing Center. Every year, you have that contribution of six thousand. So as I said, this is what has been presented to HUD for approval and will be.
Are the raises in here as well or no?
I can.
It's a yes or no question.
I, I can let Mr. Jamal speak to that because I don't know.
Michelle, are you aware of the raises in here or not?
Uh, no, I'm not aware of. So, yeah, Mr. Jamal does have a, a breakdown of what he's presenting to HUD. So we just went off of what Mr. Jamal is actually presenting to HUD.
Mayor, did you not want to look at the paper?
I've seen it.
Nice.
I've seen it. Thank you.
I wish you would have shared it with us.
You saw it when they had the, the meeting. You guys seen it?
Which one?
Public hearing. Was it in the public hearing that you were there?
Was this part of the public hearing as well?
Uh, this is inclusive.
Yes or no? Was this a part of the public hearing or not?
Yes. Okay, now.
I didn't see this during the public hearing.
The public hearing is about presenting the project that we requested and expose the public to. As a first round, there will be a public hearing number two, when we exactly know how much the allocation go into our account at the Department of Treasury, U S Department of Treasury. So far, it's in the Congress corridors. We are, can end up probably in two weeks. The Congress can approve a continuation resolution for the U S, U S federal budget. So we will be receiving exactly what we will. It should be around one point million, one point one, one point two. It's an increase. I was very conservative. So we will see.
Mr. Jamal.
Yes.
My question to you is, are there increases in here?
There is no increase here because I need you to read it so you can see what I presented and what I am gonna explain, how that works. Please, give me the time so I can assure you, you will be, all of you will be happy how that's gonna be explained.
Okay, Mr. D, before, I mean, uh, Mr. Jamal, before you move forward on this, I don't want to spend an hour going through a presentation. I just want to ask you one question.
Yes.
And if it's your answers, yes or no, and then we'll have a follow-up question.
Go ahead.
Okay. Are the raises that we approved last year in this budget, yes or no?
They're supposed to be, but, but before you say, before you say, I can't say yes because the mayor did not approve it.
Okay.
So it's already on the table.
The council, Mr. Jamal, stop for a second, please. The council approved the raise.
Yes.
Is it in this budget, the raise that they approved last year?
No.
Did you put it, is it something that you put, uh, and it was taken away from you, from the budget? Did you request the pay in the budget?
No, I left it open because, because me and, uh, Michelle, we decided we, we didn't want to put the salaries because the salaries are exclusive in every project. So let's say I worked on FEMA. It won't go into this, the allocation. So I, I presented you here and I kept it open. So you will, you will, if you want to decide to put some in, you can put in what you want.
I think we agreed to forty dollars an hour for the employees, correct?
You can put it down here and this is between you and the mayor.
Mr. Jamal, I got a question. In the past, we agreed for forty dollars an hour. Is that correct?
Well, go ahead.
Man, I'm asking you, yes or no?
Yes or no?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Where are you paid at right now, Mr. Bazzy?
It's, it's there.
What is it?
It's there, it's there.
Project coordinator?
Okay, and we, and we agreed to giving you forty?
Please, please, please refrain from naming the people we are talking about titans, please.
That's why I said project coordinator.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
I, yeah, I think.
Please, please.
So what, what did we approve, what did we approve last year for, uh, grant coordinator? Let's start that way. What was, uh?
Thirty-five.
That's the, that's the, that's the raise that we gave last year?
Yes.
Thirty-five? Okay, and the project coordinator was forty, you said?
No, the project coordinator, the project coordinator, thirty, I'm sorry, project coordinator, we approved thirty-eight. Because it was, it was just hired.
Last year.
With thirty-five. So we were, we were very competitive. She, she works full-time for Oakland County and she, she makes forty-eight dollars there.
Mr. Jamal.
How much is the, uh, project coordinator? How much did you request for last year?
Thirty-eight and, uh, as you approved the thirty-eight.
It was forty.
This is an hour.
No, thirty-eight hourly. This is.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna email the clerk. Okay?
I, I, I requested the thirty-eight. Now, you want to give her forty, it's up to you.
I'm not talking about the grant writer. I'm talking about the proj- project coordinator.
The project coordinator, thirty-five dollars.
No, we booked it up to forty. I remember that we signed up switching.
That was last year, it was.
I said last year, yes, Mr. Mr. Jamal.
Okay, that's fine.
Michelle, do you have one from last year?
What have we approved?
No, she wasn't here.
I don't. I wasn't here, unfortunately.
I mean, the rate goes between thirty-five all the way as project coordinator.
We said we were leaving, we, we said we were leaving the grant coordinator at thirty-five because she just started. I remember she came here with you. We said we were giving, we were giving the project coordinator at forty. They've been with the city for fifteen years. And the program assistant, I think we're moving up to like thirty or, or thirty-five.
Twenty-five.
Okay. Okay.
Yes.
So Michelle, what I'd like to also see, well, I mean, we're still on this budget, but they should be receiving retro pay for when they should, because they should have got their pay from the early of the year. And forty dollars an hour. I mean, for, for the project coordinator.
Coordinator. That's the only one that's changing? Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Actually, I don't know. I feel like we, we were giving all of them a raise.
Yeah, that's what I remember too.
I remember giving them all a raise.
Yeah, it was.
It, it wasn't just one, Mr. Mr. Jamal. Everybody got a raise. The program assistant went up to thirty-five. The project coordinator went to forty. And I think the grant coordinator was at thirty-eight. That's what, that's what the ultimate pay was. Forty, thirty-five, and thirty-eight.
My pay was ninety-five.
And your pay was ninety-five? Or eighty-five?
Whatever.
I mean, we can ask the clerk, council chair, or go back.
Disconfirm with the clerk.
That's what it was.
Can you?
I'll go, I'll go look at YouTube. I'll find it.
It's in the annual, annual action. But the key here is that you approved those. But it is, it is actually, I proposed it in that, but the mayor did not agree on paying that. As a budget, as we department says, we are budget centers. We buy the regulation of the state of Michigan. We have to present to you as professional in our department, our recommendation. Now, the proposed budget will go to the mayor and the administration to propose. So based on my proposal, and the mayor didn't agree with that, I respect his position with the human resources. But you, you override the mayor's decision.
Mr. 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 Jamal, please.
That's the bottom line.
We're, we're, we're not discussing, we're not having a debate. It was a yes or no questions. And I know what you're saying. Last year, there was.
That's why I didn't put any increase here because there was an increase last year and it didn't happen. So that's why I left it open for you to put whatever you want.
And, and, and we're asking you the questions.
Yes.
We're at, it's, it's us.
Yes.
That's who, that's who's overlooking the budget.
That's what I am here.
Okay, so direct, so speak to us, please.
Councilman, just, uh.
But also, I am part of the administration and I have to also respect my.
I understand, but you're, right now, the meeting is towards us.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So the way I take it, we approved something else last year, was included in the budget.
Yes.
I understand the administration did not approve it after the budget was approved to be paid. So what we're gonna do right now, we're gonna retroactive that pay from that budget that you had last year. We're gonna make sure you're getting paid before this budget is approved.
Then, then please add it here.
We don't need to, this is, this is, this is, it's gonna be a new budget. We're talking about the budget from last year.
That's what I'm saying. But if you add it here, it will be, uh, retroactive, but it will be actually.
Yeah, that's why we're gonna, we're gonna just make sure exactly what we added last year.
Your, your, your retroactive should come beforehand from this year because you were owed, we made this promise for you a year ago.
From this fiscal year?
Yes.
So what's gonna happen now, the administration, they're gonna pay you retroactive for whatever we approved this year before we approve this fiscal, the new fiscal year. That's what's gonna happen.
And moving forward, nothing should change.
So the, the ball is in their, uh, court right now. That's what's gonna happen.
So Michelle, can you please address this in your budget? You requested from me to make this, you know, salary distribution so everybody knows what we have in the department as the council requested that every personnel, okay, should be allocated the, based according to the charter of accounting. Every personnel, okay, by the state, that you should, you should know how much you are spending next year proposing for each employee you are trying to hire as a part-time. So my employees in, in my department all part-times. So in my opinion, this is, this is the way budget is done. Budget centers propose, put all their proposed projected part-timers, how much you want to pay them and what's their title gonna be. Now, if, if the administration ended up hiring those part-times, they're already budgeted and you know, since we are doing the budget in the city according to line items. I don't like line items. I fought the, 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 the council before. It should be departmental approval so we can move money, but the council.
Councilor, just let, let's, let's wait till we get the numbers from last year. What we do, we just add up to this, uh, budget and we can move on. Anything, any more questions, anybody?
Michelle, I wanted to reflect based on what the numbers that we approved last year.
Okay.
We're, we're gonna find out.
Recollection, I believe. I do know.
We have the record, so we'll, we'll get the numbers. We'll give them to you, Michelle.
Ninety-five for the director, Mr. Turner. Ninety-five for the director. It's already in your email from last year and Wendy email. You know, the, the previous, uh, uh, previous, uh, control. Okay? She requested to, to be added to the, to the budgetary, but the leadership, she sent me an email. She said the leadership didn't agree. No problem. I mean, this is administrative with legislative. Our, our, our job is to propose. Okay, ninety-five for the, ninety-five for.
Was the date, was the date April eleventh, by the way?
Mr. Jamal, please.
Was it April eleventh?
Please.
It was April eighteenth was the meeting. I pulled it up on YouTube. Do you want me to just really give you the quick recap? It was forty and then up to twenty-five for the, I believe it was the program specialist. Yes, so twenty-five and forty. That was what's.
So you both got forty?
No, no.
No. It was twenty-five for the program assistant, she said.
Yes, yeah, but the, but the grant coordinator and the project coordinator both got forty.
Are you reading from the actual plan?
Uh, from the YouTube video from last year.
Excellent.
Yep.
So how much the, for the, for the director was?
I can double-check that as for that.
Okay.
Mayor, can we pay them for that?
Council chair?
Yes, please, mayor.
Again, you know, we, we talked about this, is we have to go through, uh, the pay, the pay increases for everybody. And what you guys recommending for certain people to get paid on a director's level. So we, we, we wanted to chat about this for all pay increases, but you can't just give one.
We don't, you don't, you don't pay them. This is going to.
Council chair, we don't, we don't know, I, you know, I, we have to verify to see exactly where the money's coming from. You know, I'm, I'm hearing like two different things. I need to verify that the money is coming from the city or, or from the grant. So a- again, you know, we have to, it has to be pay equity. You have employees making fifteen thousand an hour less, doing more work. And I'm the one that has to hear about it from different employees. Sir, it's the same thing with all, we have a lot of part-time employees, okay? There's a lot of part-time employees. And you have to be fair with all employees.
Mayor, this is not coming out of our general ledger.
It, it doesn't matter. It's still, you still have to pay.
If you can pay other fifteen-dollar employees from this budget that is from the C D B G or, or, or whomever it's from, go for it.
Council chair, you have, okay, if you have pay, pay equity, you have certain people are making, doing a lot more work. Okay, just listen to this first, okay? You get somebody working twice as hard and getting paid ten to fifteen dollars less an hour. That's gonna cause the city litigation. It's gonna cause lawsuits against the city. So I'm looking at it for every, there's no games here. I'm trying to make sure that the city stays out of litigation.
Mayor, let me ask you a question. You want to keep the city out of litigation? You want to keep the city out of litigation, w- what, in what world is it okay for you to ignore the council? In a perfect world that that's not allowed?
Council chair, okay, you guys, I'm the one who has to run the whole city. I have to see what everybody.
No, you don't.
Yeah, I do.
No, you don't. The council is, the council has, has its powers as well.
You run the budget, but.
Yeah, the budget that you ignored!
Well, okay. Again, this is not a court of law. I'm just telling you, you have to run, I have to look at all the employees. All the employees and I have to see that there has to be pay equity with everybody.
Mayor.
If you talk, if you talk to anybody in like labor relation, they'll tell you, there has to be pay equity with a lot of employees. You can't give one employee who's, who's doing ten, you know, two, three times the amount of work, fifteen dollars less than an hour. You can't do that.
Mayor, I want to go back.
Even if you approve it, you can't do it because at the end of the day, I have to look at, when we recommend pay raises, I bring it in front of you guys and you guys approve or disapprove.
Nothing from the audience.
Council chair, point of order.
I said nothing from the audience. You give me a second. I said it. Rachel, please, nothing from the audience.
Okay, if you guys want to do this, run the show, I'm not answering any questions.
I'm, I'm, my question, I've been, I've been extremely respectful and I'm not being defensive with you. I'm being extremely respectful.
I'm not either.
I'm not saying you are. So I'm, but you're getting defensive saying you don't want to answer any questions.
I'm just telling you, I have to go look at every employee in the city.
Can I speak now? Can I speak now? I just want to tell you two things. Almost every single employee in the city, from union to non-union, in the last two years have received some type of raise. Every single employee except our fire department because you guys are stolen negotiation.
No, we're not negotiating. They already have.
Great, congratulations then.
Okay.
That is amazing. So there you go. Every single, mayor, please, I didn't interrupt you. That means every single person in the here receives some type of raise. And to say that this part-time employee that, or these part-time employees that are receiving money from a different account that are being paid through HUD, it's not coming out of your general ledger, to say that, you need to look into it. You've been the mayor for three years. You should have looked into it three years ago. Why are you waiting that when we want to give them a raise to say, well, I don't know where their money is really coming from. I don't know who's telling the truth. Wherever you're getting your information from, regardless, you said something that resonated. We, we determined where the mon, how the money is being spent. And that includes pay raises and bonuses. And if we say that we're gonna give the C D B G employees their raises, honor it. That is not your decision to say, no, well, I'm not gonna do it. I'm gonna look into it. I want to pay everybody else. Great, you just paid everybody else. Now that you're telling me that we have some type of agreement with our fire department.
Council chair, you're done?
Yeah.
Okay, we discussed this before. I told you, once we get to the contracts, okay, then we, we, we had a, a closed session. We talked about the pay raises for non-union and even, uh, part-time employees. We discussed a few months ago.
I must have been there.
Well, I don't know who was there. I didn't take role. But we can ask the clerk to go back and look at who was in the meeting. But I can tell you, we discussed this. We said, once we get all the contracts, we're gonna bring forward the rest of the employees who are non-union.
Well, then, mayor, I'm gonna tell you, you brought this budget today with giving pay raises to all your directors at five percent? Don't bring it in front of us then. Until you're ready to pay everybody equally, don't bring it in front of us. At least that's why I'm gonna tell you.
Council chair, that's what I just said. You're repeating what I said.
Are you giving, giving them their retro pay and their pace?
We have to go through all the employees and make sure we're equal with all the employees.
The ones who didn't get a raise for the last two, three years. You see, this is, this is.
Okay, C D B G got a raise like a year and a half ago.
No, it, no, they did not.
Well, he's right there. He can say.
I'm not, I'm not worried about the director that you appointed.
No, no, I'm talking about C D B G employees got pay raises about a year, year and a half.
Did you guys get a pay, pay raise a year and a half ago, sir?
Uh, three, two years, when I went down there, there were.
I'm, I'm talking about the employees. I'm not worried about you. I'm asking about, did the employee?
I didn't get myself.
We're talking about the employees.
My employees, two of. My employees, two of them, they get raises because they were at the lower level after the COVID. So I did analysis and I compared to the market rate, and I put them at the market rate at that time at the lower. So he was twenty-five. He's been promised for five years to get to thirty. He wasn't. So I raised him to thirty. The mayor approved it. The the uh the program, the program coordinator or assistant, she was at sixteen. We did market analysis, we raised it to the bottom, which is twenty, compared to to where they are back two years ago, and the mayor approved it. Now, last year, I had to do another market analysis based on HUD rate with prevailing wageses. So if I am gonna compare his salary or her salary or the salary of the part-time employees with the prevailing, federal prevailing wages, they are not even half of what it is. Because when I got a project funded by federal or state, we pay, we pay the contractors' employees prevailing wageses. It's mandatory. So when I pay for a carpenter, seventy dollars an hour, and I pay for somebody who's administrative, like thirty-five or forty dollars when they are doing construction, and I have, I have coordinators doing construction. Okay, last year we did three million dollars, a team project from my office.
Okay, Mr. Jamal, why are you, why are you yelling? Tone it down, Mr. Hang on, point of order. I don't wanna point of order you. Please do me a favor, tone it down. Tone it, tone it down a little bit. Mayor.
This is my, this is my recommendation to the mayor.
Please, Mr. Jamal.
Now, it's up to him and up to you.
Mr. Jamal. Mr. Jamal.
Yep.
Mr. Jamal, Mayor, can we just give them their pays like we asked last year?
I have to go back and look at it. Let me see what, I don't have the numbers in front of me right now. Again, I have to look and see what what other employees are getting.
I don't, but none of these other employees are being paid through HUD.
There's no benefits.
There's no, they don't get no benefits, no fringe, no nothing.
What about the other employees who are part-time that are not getting benefits?
Those are employee, we are not talking discussing them. We are discussing those who do not get paid from our budget. They get paid from HUD. They don't get paid. All, council already approved of it. I don't know who's, mind you, we've did like three different resolutions saying pay them their money. Why are we still ignoring it? You don't, look, with all due respect, if you don't wanna give them, you you, who you appointed, that's on you. But these three people that that received their raises, which is nothing, it's fifteen dollars extra an hour.
Forty dollars an hour? You're talking about.
They're at thirty and thirty-five.
So you gotta give a, you know, a coordinator the pay, the same pay as a director.
A project coordinator that works twenty hours a week, it's not the same thing as a court, it's not anybody else. We're we're comparing pennies and and dimes right now. I don't know why you're so against wanting to give them their raises.
It's, I'm looking at the entire employee.
But it's not your budget.
Councilor Chair.
It is the budget for HUD. It is.
Well, like I said, let me, let me go back and relook at it, okay? So for the last three years, I've been busy fixing the last twenty years of.
Thank you. Thank you for your services. You signed up for that.
No, I don't need that thanks, but I'm telling you.
Yeah, good job.
Because you asked a question, and you said for the last three years, I've been fixing the things that have been broken for the last three years. That's what I've been doing.
And this is another fix that the council has ordered the administration to follow through.
We're, we're, we're doing everything we can.
Clearly, you're, you don't respect the council enough to honor it.
I do respect the council, but there's, okay.
Unanimously voted on this.
Again, there's, there's things that, we have things in the queue. We're working on things as, you know, right now, okay?
You know, you know, you know, look, Mayor, well, let me tell you what happened. Let me tell you what happened, Mayor. You, what happened was when we gave them their raises, you ordered whomever you ordered, don't give them their raises. That's what happened. I'm gonna tell you, since we're gonna start playing these little tic tacs back and forth, I'm gonna tell you the truth. That's exactly what happened. Go ahead, councilman.
Councilor Chair, um, just, you know, if they're dead busy working on so many things in the queues, how many other employees that without council's approval, behind council's back have gotten raises?
Everybody.
Exactly my point.
Every director got some type of raise.
It's pick and choose who gets raises in this city. So.
There's not a true statement either, council.
It's a hundred percent true statement. No, it's not point of order.
It is point of order. Can't make false statements.
It's not a false statement.
And again.
It's not a false statement.
Okay, guys.
Didn't make a false statement, you've been on council.
Guys, point of order, come on.
I I stand behind my statement. I stand.
We'll see what the court says.
I don't care. We'll see what the court says. Your attorney will say what the court says.
I'm waiting for it.
No, me too.
Guys, please stop. Mayor, please.
Well, you make your councilmen stop.
Councilman.
I'm I'm not gonna sit here and take a beating.
Don't tell me to make anybody stop, sir.
Well, he's your boss.
Nobody's my boss. The residents are my boss.
He's the council chair.
My residents are my boss.
Point of order, man, guys, come on. We're, we are not taking taking right now. Let's finish this up. Mr. Jamal, you happy for this? I knew this was gonna happen.
I am, I am happy that.
Well, council chair.
It is between the elected administrative and elected legislatures. You have to resolve this by, if you approve something with, you know, with with majority, un, we call it, uh uh unviable, then it's a matter of outside our hands.
Mr. Jamal, unanimously, we all approved your guys' raise, just so you know that, Michelle. I don't know at this point, like, how much power the council has, like, do we gotta, every time we want the mayor to do something to listen to council, we gotta keep going to court and keep putting taxpayers' money in the court's hands? Like, is that what we wanna keep doing?
That's, I think, the best option.
You know, and it's sad that this is where we're going, because it's like, I don't respect you guys, I'm not gonna listen to you guys, but I respect the legislature, I respect the courts, I respect the third branch, and I'm gonna listen to the courts, and I'm gonna let the courts tell me, and when the courts tell me yes, then I'll listen. Why are we doing that? This is childish game playing. Uh, so I'm gonna say it one last time, and I'm gonna bring it up on Tuesday's meeting. Mayor, I'm asking you to please give them their retro pay, give them the money that they deserved, and let this budget be the same exact amount that it was supposed to be from last year, that councilman, uh, former council chair Abdullah, former council chair Pro Tom Muscat, uh, councilwoman Ahmad, councilwoman Breyer, councilman Conson, and councilman Wensel, who all voted on it unanimously, and then put a resolution and said, here's a resolution, please, Mayor, follow it. And it still wasn't followed. So, guys, I don't know what else to tell you guys. You guys should file a lawsuit. Um, Michelle, we can go ahead and go through.
Well, that's it for CDBG. So we can move on to building.
I'm sorry. I wish you the best in all your future endeavors.
Sorry for what? I am happy to work for the city. It was unconditional for the salary. I love the city, and I'm gonna work, I'm gonna work with the city. My employees, uh, you know, part-time employees are happy. We are. We did so many projects. We saved the city from losing almost two million dollars. The mayor knows about it. He was part of the process. He pushed us, I'm giving him credit now, where the credit he deserved.
Thank you.
He pushed, he pushed other department heads, you know, to 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 move on with the project and actually assigned me the project to be directly supervised by me and my staff, because we have experience in construction.
Thank you. Mr. De, uh, Mr. Kitcher, Mr. Jamal, thank you.
What's that, council?
I'm sorry. I realize if I just raise my voice, but I have, I've been teacher all my life, professor at the college, I don't use the microphone.
Thank you.
I talk to two hundred people in a big hall without microphone. So please understand. It worked at a plant where I have to raise my voice because of the, of the, uh, uh, you know, DPI. It's like at ninety, so I have to raise my voice, so my staff also at the plant.
Is that your loudest, is that your loudest, uh, voice?
No, not yet. You wanna hear it?
Yeah.
Alright. You wanna hear me talking, the way I talk at the college?
No, no.
No, no, we we have a bigger agenda in front of us. Thank you, guys.
Alright. Thank you, council, for doing.
Mr. Mazzi, I'm sorry that you're put in these positions.
No, no, he is with me.
Mr. Jamal, Mr. Jamal. I'm sorry I even said another thing. You guys, you guys have been adjourned.
Sometime I need to lay on him when I'm walking, without laying on, because, you know, we go together, we do a lot of things. Other staff do, but they are, we are more active in the direct operation of the, of our department. And by the way, CDBG is not the C E D D. We still have a part of our budget in the waterfront from FEMA. We already have two point nine million dollars approved. So our salary also comes from FEMA. It's in the budget. Mr. Turner, the owner knows, give them the account number. So we already establishing that's in the process, approved. We have the money at FEMA to win nine millions.
Mr. Jamal, like we said, the the mayor's gonna make sure, he's gonna make the time to look into it and get you guys paid before the new fiscal year. I promise you. Thank you very much. Let's move on.
Promise them.
Okay, the next is.
He wants this budget to be approved.
Thank you.
The new one.
We'll see you soon.
Good job.
Thank you.
You have this, right?
I do have a copy of that, yes. So next is Department of Public Works. Um, Mr. Conrad, I believe, stepped out in the hall.
He's back.
Okay, perfect.
This is going to page twenty-five?
Yes, page twenty-five.
Sam, you ready?
So he'll be joining us for the rest of the evening. All right, we ready?
I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine.
Give me a second.
Absolutely.
Sorry. You all right, Mr. Conrad?
I did a little meditation, huh?
That's what he was doing, meditating outside.
Perfect.
Sorry, I'm good.
You're good?
Yes.
Okay. Are we sure?
Yes.
Okay.
Honestly, I I walk outside, he's just, he was really meditating outside.
Good for you. Okay, salaries. You have the personnel budget in front of you. Um, there are currently four positions vacant, and that is reflected in the budget.
So we're not budgeting for them?
Correct, yes.
We are, we aren't?
We, I believe there are four that are not budgeted for. Let me just double check.
We're already short-staffed on DPW, or we're just not gonna? Anybody?
Oh, no, actually, I'm sorry. We had, we filled those positions, so we did add them in. So there is all of the positions that were requested, other than a deputy director, are in the budget. So the next line item is retirement for prior years. There's just, uh, one more payout there. Um, oh, I'm sorry, wrong line. There's no more payouts left in the retirement prior years. Part-time, we have eighteen thousand. Overtime, we have two hundred twenty-eight thousand, just a slight increase from last year.
That's for the overtime?
Yes.
I mean, if we hired more people, why we still have so much overtime? Director?
Did we hire four new people? Are those positions filled?
We we still have four vacancies in water.
In water.
Um.
So we didn't fill those four vacancies?
That's in water. So we're gonna go to water later.
I know. We're talking about DPW. Did we fill those four new vacancies?
We have one, we have one left in in highway. We're full in building maintenance. Um, but when we promote somebody to a light, that's gonna leave a labor vacancy, so we'll still have to hire a new labor. So I mean.
But I'm always hearing that we're short-staffed. Every time I talk to somebody from DPW, we're short-staffed. We don't, we're down five, we're down four, we're down five, we're down four. So my question to you, Mr. Director.
We are always short-staffed. I mean.
Are we still short four more? Because.
We're short three right now.
Okay, so we didn't fill them.
In 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 water and, no, not in water. In in highway, we're short three. Building maintenance, we're full-staffed. So highway, we're short three?
And how much are we short in water?
Uh, four labors and a meter repair person. Um, and I do have somebody who's retiring at the end of the month. That's a heavy equipment operator.
But this overtime does not cover water department.
No.
So we're talking overtime does not cover the water department, he's short in.
I mean.
So my question is.
We we operate, I mean, emergencies, you know, we pretty much work every Friday as well. Um, I mean, we we operate a lot on overtime.
Didn't we talk before, like, I thought you're gonna, guys gonna do like different shifts last year, like, people work from Monday to Wednesday?
That that takes place January or, uh, July first. So July first, we go through the the, they'll be working a Monday through Thursday shift and then a Tuesday through Friday shift.
So that way Friday won't be overtime, only Saturday, Sunday?
No, unless, of course, you know, we don't have enough staff to to handle an emergency or something like that, and then we'll have to, you know, get those people. I mean, because we are working with half the numbers when you split them like that. I mean, we're only gonna be full-staffed on, you know, Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays. So on Mondays and Fridays, you know, yes, we will be there on, you know, five days a week, but we will be, you know, only partially staffed. Please proceed.
Uh, I just, I'm gonna make a recommendation. In twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, we used a hundred ninety-seven thousand, seven sixteen. In twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, we used two hundred thousand. Um, I think we need to get a hold of how we're spending our overtime. You're already at a hundred and eighty-eight thousand, so you're asking, requesting two hundred twenty-eight thousand. I say we stay at two hundred thousand. Uh, I'm gonna ask that our director controls that, uh, overtime, please. I mean, at the end of the day, the jobs of our directors are to be fiscally responsible, especially when we, you know, you're the leader. Um, so I would like to see that at two hundred thousand instead of two hundred twenty-eight thousand. So please eliminate twenty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-nine.
Okay, noted.
Councilor Chair, before you, before you put the hammer down on that, I think one of the things that, uh, Director Conrad and I were discussing in our financial review meeting is that his department has been asked to assist with parking recs events and be there on a Saturday. He's been asked to do other things that, um, are related to other departments.
But why doesn't those departments on weekends allocate the money from their budget over?
Yeah.
Great question, Councilman Saab, because I think that was the thing that the director and I were talking about.
We're not saying, we're not saying, we're not saying no overtime. Please, if you don't mind, I'm not saying no overtime. Tr- projectory, we've always done two hundred thousand, two hundred thousand. This year, we're saying, go to two hundred thirty thousand. All I'm saying is, no, like you've maintained it from the past, keep it going. Let's not make the trajectory saying, oh, you know, we're usually doing two hundred, we're gonna go up to two thirty this year. Uh, last year, we did two thirty, we're gonna go up to two sixty this year. There needs to be some, some type of accountability.
That we're fully staffed.
You know, and especially now that we're fully staffed, thirty thousand dollars is really nothing. I mean, the year's almost over. We're in April.
Well, and I, and the only thing I would say, because I know he and I also talked a little bit about the the guys in the water department, um, that we've had a promotion, we had another guy change, uh, jobs, and so you're gonna have that, that time where, um, there's no one there to do the job.
We're still giving them two hundred thousand dollars in overtime. There's still a lot of money.
I just, I just wanted to make sure you knew that, Councilman, the Councilor Chair, because I, because I think it's one of those scenarios in his space.
Mr. Turner, keep in mind, we are three point six million dollars over on this budget. So if we're cutting thirty thousand here and thirty thousand dollars there, we're making tough decisions. That's all. I mean, Mr. Conrad, do you see an issue with with the two hundred thousand? Is that you're saying that's not enough?
I mean, I can make whatever happens. I mean, it's, you know, I'm I'm not the most popular person when I tell them they can't work a, you know, a particular day. Um, but, I mean, I do it.
And look, we're gonna be, like, you you're more staffed. We're switching the schedules now so that you're gonna be cumbersome on the weekends.
Right.
Things are gonna be a lot different. You might even see this at only a hundred and fifty thousand, because you're gonna have, every day's gonna be covered now. Because the schedule changes. That was the whole purpose. When we sat into these meetings, they said, we're gonna be doing this so that we can cut overtime in half. I'm not even telling you I'm gonna cut you overtime in half. I'm just gonna say, projectory, you've always used two hundred thousand. Why are you asking for two hundred thirty thousand this year? Let's just keep it at two hundred thousand.
I, I guess, you know, just because of salary increases and other things, I mean, um, but I can get by with two hundred.
Thank you.
I'll do it, Mr. Conrad.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Constant, uh, Constant. So when recreation uses our, your, your, your departments, you know, men and women, uh, for special events and everything, that time should come, be coming out of their budget, if they're requesting it, especially if it's overtime. That money should be brought back.
So I'm not aware of a avenue right now where, you know, we get a work order or anything from, you know, let's use recreation, for example, that, you know, hey, um, we need your staff for a special event.
Give me an example.
The the Summer Fest, yeah. You know, we set up the tents, we, you know, empty the trash, we clean up after, we set up before, you know. Um, all those things, you know, requ- are done with overtime. All those things, you know, are done with overtime. I mean, the, the events are in the evening. You know, all the little music festivals that take place during, during the summer. I mean, those are all on overtime, those are all done by my staff. You know, so I mean, it, it's all general fund, you know, so, I mean, it, it's all coming, but, you know, so that money is in that two hundred thousand to pay for all that.
But it's not fair to punish you for another department's...
So, yeah, I mean, we're not, you know, doing necessarily all, you know, DPW.
They should be entitled to their, to their overtime. But what I'm trying to tell you, that's a great example that you used. When Mr. Deeb does things for building and maintenance, he pays through building and maintenance. When Mr. Deeb does things for DPW, he pays through DPW. If you do things for Parks and Recs, Parks and Recs needs to be able to pay you, so that way you can still save that overtime, so it's not coming out of your budget. So I don't know if you need to get with the mayor.
Well, I, I guess we'll have to see where the new payroll system, if we'll be able to just, you know, code our activities to reflect those budget items.
We do, we're doing it technically.
Maybe the controller can, can help out a bit on that.
Yeah, I mean, that's all it needs. Yeah, that's all it needs, is just to code, the correct, you know, allow us to put those coatings on, so that, you know, I mean, when the, the water department requires a highway person to, you know, work for them, because, you know, they're short-staffed, or someone can't fill in on an emergency. In my department, we can code that person's labor to reflect on the water, to, you know, budget. I don't know if that same avenue is available when we work for Parks and Recs, or we work for somebody else, and, and hopefully this new system that we're moving to will, will allow us to do that. But we do it internally, you know, if, you know, building maintenance needs, you know, when they need some help, and they get the highway people, they're coded to building maintenance to reflect in their budget. So, I mean, I can do it internally within my stuff, but I don't know if I can do it externally.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have clothing, which has increased this year because of the new contract. There's an additional allowance for clothing per employee. Hospital insurance and life insurance, again, just the normal increase. General government pension, same increase, two hundred fifteen thousand. Your FICA at eighty-seven. Supplies at fifteen, and materials and supplies at twenty. The supplies is building, materials and supply is automotive-related. Emergency storm, we have at fifty. Of course, that's unpredictable, so we don't know, but we put something in this year. Road supplies at one fifty. Street signs at twenty. Dues and memberships, five hundred dollars. Contractual services at eighty-five thousand.
Who, who do we use for the, those services?
The contractual services.
That, that's all of our contractors, like Urban, any contract, any, so anybody we use... That's eight-one-eight, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's anybody that we use to supplement our internal staff is, is contractual services.
Can you give me examples?
The tree removal. That, that's, you know, our grass cutting, that's eight-one-eight.
Contractual services?
Yeah, anybody, anybody who provides a service for us that is not done by city employees.
How come right under that says we have city grass cutting?
That, well, we, so we track that separately, that's all.
So that's city property, is that it's the grass?
Question.
Yeah.
Why do we, why do we...
We have tree removals too.
Hold on. Mr. Conrad, me and you, I know we were gonna get into this discussion. I was actually looking forward to Department of Public Works. It's actually my favorite budget. And I specifically told myself all last year, I'm going to focus and zoom in on this budget. There is a huge tree issue in Dearborn Heights. Either you like to say it or not, we have contractual services here at eighty-five thousand. We have a tree company that we use. I can tell you, almost every, probably all of us on council, almost every single day, somebody calls me about their tree. And not saying that they want the tree removed, but either my branches are falling, these branches are huge, I mean, you, you know how many, I mean, me and you have gotten into so many several arguments. And I, and I respect you and I love you, but sometimes, you know, you're like, man, Mo, there's nothing I can do, and your question back to me is, put it in the budget, put it in the budget. Hang on, hang on, hang on. I'm just, I'm verbatim, I'm staying what you say. And we're just, and I can tell you exactly, right outside the building, building department, you had your shirt open, and some chest hair coming out. And you kept saying, well, it's not on my budget, I can't do nothing with it. So, you want the increase in construction and, and...
Councilor Chair, if you go down, there is...
I, I see, I see, I see, I, I see it.
The one...
Trust me, I read this already.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
I see for a hundred and forty thousand, and I also see contractual services here at eighty-five thousand. What is more accessible for you? Do you wanna see an increase in the tree services or in contractual services? Can you guys do it? Or do you want me to put it towards somebody else?
I mean, no, we need, we need to add it to the tree service, because I mean, a lot of the stuff that, that we give to Urban is the stuff that my staff, you know, it's too big for us. You know, I mean...
Is eighty-five thousand gonna be enough for, for them to do that, and...
I mean, I could spend more. It, it, it's, you know, what can, what can we reasonably afford? I mean, it...
Well, we just eliminated twenty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-nine dollars that I'm gonna now be able to, be able to play around with.
There, there, there's a lot. I mean, you know, they... My best determination is, is, we went through a long period of time where they didn't do much tree work here, you know. I think, you know, before John Selmy got here, before I got here, you know, there, there was very little work, and, I mean, we've progressed in getting there, but it, it's gonna take a, a while to catch up from the years of neglect and...
Mr. Mr. Conrad...
I mean, we are, I...
Mr. Conrad, you've been with us for two and a half years, or three years, actually. Three years you've been with us. And for three years, you've told me, we have a long list, we have a long list, we have this list, I added them to the list, we have this list. And it's been three years. I swear, there's been three years, and I'm still telling the same people, you're on the list.
Okay.
That Mr. Con...
Just let me ask the council...
I'm gonna let you ask the council, and, because I'm gonna bring it up, but I wanna finish my statement, please. Because I'm, I'm frustrated with this. The same people, for three years, that I've called you about, that I've called this administration about, that I've called the, the mayor's office, and said for three years, I'm still being told I'm on the same list. What plans do we have to fix this list?
Okay.
Do we have a plan? I don't wanna hear that we, we can't afford it.
Would you...
Do we have a plan?
I have a plan.
Okay, now we're talking.
So can I address the three-year people? The four-year people, the five-year people?
No, because you're gonna tell me they're not severe, and we have to go to somebody else. Then why are we telling people we're adding you to a list if we're never gonna touch them, because there's so many trees in the city that we're gonna continue to... It should be just like the mayor said, go in the queue, first come, first served. Three years, people are just saying, but somebody calls you tomorrow, and you're like, oh, it's severe, let me take...
I agree. I mean, the list is nothing more than a log of calls.
Have you guys followed up with those people?
Yes.
Every single one of them?
So here's what we tell them, is, your, your tree request has been looked at, but it's, doesn't meet the criteria of a removal or a trim at this time. I mean, I have pages of trims that are one and two. We'll never get to ones and twos.
Why, why are you telling them then, I added you to a list? Why don't you tell them, we're never gonna trim your tree?
Exactly. I have this same argument with my staff on a daily basis, that, you know, we shouldn't be telling people they're on a list when there's no way, they're a one and a two. We're never gonna get to them. We're, we're working on four fives and threes.
So we're lying to residents?
I don't know if we're lying to them.
You are, you just told me we are.
But, I mean, you know, I guess we're acknowledging them, that we looked at their tree...
No, you said I'm adding you to a list, and we're gonna, when we get to you, we'll take it down. You just here, Blaney told me on the record that we're never gonna get to the one and twos. So why are you telling them you're gonna ever get to them then?
I don't know. I don't like that they tell them we're gonna get to them. I, you know, I don't think we should have a list with ones and twos on it. I mean, it should be a list that we're gonna get to in the next six months. Anything older than that should be said, call us back in six months to a year. We'll look at it again.
What's a number stands for? The ones and the twos?
That's a severity.
The severity. But now, let me ask you another question. According to our charter, we need to have somebody that is an, I don't wanna say their term wrong, an arbist, to come here and to determine, not you, not somebody that works for DPW, an arbist. According to our charter, needs to be the one to determine if these trees, these trees are either one, two, three, four, or five. And nobody, nobody in DPW is an arbist.
We, so...
Hang on one second, Councilman.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. No, I'll, I'll... I'll refrain my time, Doug.
Well, my question...
Go ahead.
My question is, do we have an arbist working for us in the city of Dearborn Heights?
No, we don't, but our, we do rely on our contractors, Deerborn Tree at the time, and now Urban Tree, they do have arborists, so when we have a question where we're not sure of whether a tree is dead or alive, we will ask them, and they will give us a recon consult on, you know, those trees. So, I mean, where we technically don't have an arbist on our staff, we do have an arbist available to us when, you know, I mean, most of the time, you don't need to be an arbist to look at a tree and see...
But our city charter says so, sir. Our city charter says you have to have one. So now, when you go out and assess a tree, you're not an arbist. That's like me saying, I, you know what, you know, I can tell if this person's old, they might be, be diabetic. It's not the answer. Go ahead, Councilman.
I'm all set. It was, I, we have an arbist that we contract with that comes out.
Yes.
For questionable. There's a lot of discussion. I mean, I've been on the council for over twenty years. Some people would cut the tree, or we change the ordinance. So you, you're getting at more trees and tree trimming and so forth than past, with past DPW directors, correct?
Yeah, I, I mean, I'll guess, how many trees have we taken down since July first?
That's irrelevant to the question. The question, the question, I don't want you taking down trees. What I don't want you to do is lie to residents. Because you're lying to me as well, and then I'm lying to the residents. Do you know why Mr. Councilman Chair Abdullah no longer ran? Because every time he called and said, can you help this resident? They'd say, yeah, yeah, let me look into it. And then the resident would call him back two weeks later and say, I swear I told them. And then he'd call you guys back and say, well, we're gonna see what we can do. And then he'd call them back and say, well, they said they're gonna look into it. And it went back and forth, and he said, I look like a liar, and so that's why I'm not running anymore. It wasn't because he wanted to spend more time with his family. It was because we were getting the runaround, and so it makes us look bad. We live in this community, Mr. Conrad. We see these people every single day. I shared a story with you. I couldn't go watch football at a friend's house, because for one year, I begged you about this lady's tree that was dead, that was lifting up her floor. You eventually got to it. We got to it. But for one year, I had to hide. Anytime I came over, I would park down the street and walk, because she'd sit in her driveway and wait to see me to walk in. Knowing my friend had, holding a bunch of guys at the house, she'd wait for my car to pull up. I would have to jump the neighbor's fence and run through the backyard, because she would chew up my ear. This is a true story. I shouldn't have to feel that way. Go ahead, Michelle. I'm sorry, my question is, how much more money would you need in the tree servicing so that you guys can service more trees? You had a hundred and forty thousand.
Probably, probably ten million.
Okay. To, to service trees, you need ten million dollars?
There's a lot. I mean, if, if I were to take care of every call that comes in, I mean, we did a hundred and eighty-seven trees since July. Just my DPW.
And thank you. We thank you for that.
I mean, that's a lot. And we did three hundred and twenty-seven tree trims since July.
How, how many do we have on the list?
We're out there...
How many do you have still on the list?
That needs to be taken down. How many people do we have on the list?
Last time we checked, it was three ninety-seven.
I have seventy-one removals on the list right now, and I have a hundred and ninety-two trims on the list right now.
So you were able to do it on your first budget with a hundred and twenty thousand. You got an additional twenty thousand with half the amount of work. Will that list be done this year? So can I tell the residents that are on that list for the list?
There's, there's a considerable number of ones on there that, I mean, you know, I could take down more trees by just driving up and down the street and, and identifying ones that people haven't called. I mean, basically, what is happening here is I'm servicing people that are calling on trees and ignoring people who aren't getting called on trees, you know, I mean...
What?
We do a, a street trim, because we're trimming, we'll get those and take down the dead ones, but, I mean, you know, my highway staff, you know, will often say, you know, I drive by five dead trees to look at one to put on a list to have removed. I mean, they're, they're, you're right, there is a serious tree issue here, and, I mean...
So, Mr. Conrad, I don't, I'm not trying to play like the games back and forth. Ten million dollars, obviously, you're, it's comical. I'm not trying to be comical. I'm, this is a very severe conversation that we're having. What is the realistic number additional than the hundred and forty thousand that you need to continue to service the list? Will fifty thousand dollars help?
I'm sure it would. I mean, you know, maybe, you know, to get a more accurate grasp on what needs to be done, is maybe we should take that fifty thousand dollars, put it towards, you know, Michigan State to come down here and do a tree survey for the entire city. Log every tree, you know, do something...
Mr. Conrad, you, you have a list, you have a list that you had for three years. You've told people you were gonna get back to, and you never did. You've told council members that you guys will have somebody reach out to them, and you guys never did. And you just told us that you...
That's a lie. We, we get back with everybody.
You just told me that!
We get back with everybody. We have trees, yes, that we are not going to be able to get to, because they don't need it. I mean, they're ones. They don't need it. I mean, and trees come every day.
Who's determining that? The arbist that's working for us?
Yes.
Who's the arbist?
Um, Brandon.
So you do have an arbist working for you?
Yes.
What changed in the five minutes?
I mean, like, like I said again, Brandon's our arbist from Urban Tree.
Okay, Michelle, you can proceed.
Okay, we're not adding anything at this time, correct?
I would like to add... Well, there's an additional twenty already.
Okay.
So you can just leave it as is.
Okay, sounds good.
But I want, I want the, I want the, I want the director to know, this is a serious issue, and we're not gonna, gonna keep ignoring it, and telling people, oh, I'll get back to you guys on it, and we'll see what we can do, we'll add you to a list, and then say, we're never gonna get to that list.
I would like you to consider, you know, like I suggested, hiring...
No.
Some kind of arbist, or, you know, some kind of...
You want, you want a survey to come in here to tell people that, you know, the best survey is?
To do, to do a complete survey of our entire city. How, I don't even know how many trees I have in the city.
Mr. 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 Conrad?
I mean, wouldn't it be prudent to know how many trees we have?
That's a great question.
And species they are?
By the time the survey is done, we'll have different trees, different number.
I'll tell, I'll tell you this, I'm, I'm all for that. I'm all for that. After you can, after you guys can stick to your word by getting rid of that list.
Okay.
Yeah, get through that list, and you will have that. I'm all for, I'm all for figuring out what wildlife we have in the city, what, what animals are in our trees. You just told me, since July, you went, you took down a hundred and eighty trees and you serviced three hundred and sixty. You're telling me right now on your list, you have seventy-five trees, and you have a hundred and ten. Service them! And anybody moving forward, tell everybody, we can't add you to a list, your tree is fine, call us back in six months. You're the director. You can enforce that. You should be enforcing that. Thanks, Michelle.
Of course. So next line is tree planting for twenty-two thousand. The next line is just the internal allocation...
Mr. Conrad, is twenty-two thousand dollars enough for you, two thousand dollars more? Because I know, I think we passed, like, we spent seventeen thousand dollars on a bunch of trees last year.
I mean, it isn't, one of our highest requests is to get a tree planted. You know, we have difficulty getting thirty-five trees, which is kind of what the contractors like to get, to give us a decent price. So, I mean, we increased it a little bit, just because the, the trees went up this year from last year.
Okay.
So, I mean, you know, if they go a little more, or we get a few more interest, I mean, you know...
We can always, we can always amend the budget.
Right, we can amend it and juggle some things around. I mean, there's always a little cushion somewhere, but, I mean, I think twenty-two's a good placeholder.
Okay.
Okay. Then the next one's your internal allocation of a hundred and twenty thousand.
What's that for?
That is for the comptroller's office allocation to DPW.
What line number is that?
Um...
Eight-two-four.
Eight-two-four. Eight-two-four.
So, okay, I don't understand what's that for.
So, every month, there's an allocation done from several different departments to funds or departments that are supported by, say, the treasurer, the comptroller's office, um, and the costs are allocated. So there's a reimbursement up in the revenues, and then there's an expenditure here, so it's really just a wash. So then the next line item is motor fuel of forty-five thousand. Um, road repairs, we have it two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, that's lower, because we're expecting the majority of the road repairs to come out of the streets funds, so we'll get to that in a moment. Insurance, MMRMA insurance has been pretty stable, so we kept it at two-twenty-five this year. Increased it just a little bit, but basically what it's going to be.
What does that insure against?
Uh, that's just your general liability insurance.
That is to cover if anything, is if they're working, they damage anything like.
Exactly.
I know there was a time where like a driver hit somebody's mirror, city was able to fix it through MMRMA.
Yes, yep, or any building type, you know, just general liability. Um, then you have your underground storage tank, uh, liability for twenty-five hundred. Traffic light maintenance for fifty thousand.
What is the traffic light maintenance?
Go ahead.
That's what we pay to Wayne County for our signal energy and our signal maintenance.
Why'd we go up?
Um, no, I'm keeping that at fifty, it was budgeted for fifty this year.
No, but we only spent thirty-three thousand, and then we've already only spent twenty-four thousand.
That's a good question, I don't know why it was lower in twenty-two, twenty-three, but we can look into that and get back to you.
I mean, it basically is, you know, if we don't have any damage or things that need to be corrected, then those aren't reflected in our bills. So, um, I mean, it's a, it kind of depends on, you know, how things get damaged and.
Since the year before, we spent thirty-three thousand, we can probably take it down to thirty-five.
Well, I'm gonna leave it there for now, no, I don't, we don't want to owe Wayne County something. Unless you want to, Councilman, I'm all for it. We can take it away. We could take the additional fifteen and put it in our tree fund and knock out a couple more trees for the, the director.
I mean, if we do, we'll have to make a budget adjustment to go back, I mean.
Just the way I'm looking at it, the year before, we used thirty-three thousand, till now, we use twenty-four thousand, so by the end of June, I don't know if we're gonna use another ten thousand.
So we're actually gonna get, take money out of there, and then you're gonna have to move it back to the general fund.
I believe the fifty is a five-year average, right?
The fifty is a five-year average, so it, it's completely up to you.
We can keep it if you want, Councilman, it's up to you. Want to take it to thirty-five?
Okay.
I'll make a note of that. Repair and maintenance, we have, oh, go ahead.
Council Chair?
Yes, sir.
Do we still pay Musfa, Director Conrad, that, you know, do we still have to pay into that, is that still collected? For the underground storage tanks?
Um, I think that's, isn't that part of the?
That's the twenty-five hundred, it's up a couple, it's up the previous line.
Yeah, is that still collected?
It is.
By the state of Michigan?
Every year.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, repair and maintenance, we have at one-fifty. Um, training was increased due to the union contract, so that is up to five thousand. And then capital outlay for this line item, we have the safe streets and state, safe routes to schools. So those are two grants there, that's just, um, the expenditure portion. There's a revenue up in the revenue section that includes everything but a twenty percent match.
Is this the, uh, Mayor, what was the name of the street fund?
There's safe streets, and then there's safe routes to schools.
Sir, why exactly are we doing direct with this grant?
I believe that's the one that Ali Dibbs working on for all the school crossings. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that, but I believe that's what.
We passed, we passed a million-dollar resolution to do this work, the Joey Smith Initiative. So, is that what this is, or, I mean, I know like, nobody really cares what the council says.
I, I believe this is the match for all that stuff.
This is a, two grants that were awarded.
I know, one was for three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars.
Yes, and then the other one was a hundred and something. Um.
It was the additional of part of the grant.
Yes.
So one was three ninety-one, and what's the other one?
Um, actually, let me get that total dollar amount.
Can you tell me exactly what they both are and how much they both are?
So we have the safe routes to school was actually one forty-five, seven eighty.
Okay.
And the safe streets is four ninety-six, five hundred, yep.
Four ninety-six. So, four ninety-six and.
One forty-five, seven eighty. So that's it for your.
Yes, sir, Councilman.
And that, the capital outlay, is that mostly new equipment, Director Conrad?
No, that's those grants, that's the two, there's nothing for equipment in here.
Okay.
What are we doing for preventative maintenance? Being like.
Well, I mean, we need some money to buy new equipment, which isn't available, so, I mean, we're maintaining what we have, so. I mean, it'd be great.
Well, we approved last year's budget for a new.
No, there was zero capital in last year's budget.
Yeah, or was it the year before for the, there was a new street sweeper that we approved?
Yes, that was.
Last year's.
Two or three years ago budget.
There's nothing in last year's.
How about the year before? I, I remember doing it.
The last year's actual was two hundred and eighty, I can pull up the budget.
Yeah, there was nothing last year.
Okay, well, then it was the year before, because I recall it being in front of us, and we had just approved it, but the money was obviously, had already been approved.
Yes, that would, so, right, my first year here, there was.
Into the mic, please.
My first year here, there was capital in the budget for equipment, I think we bought a dump truck for highway and a sweeper, but I think the sweeper actually might have been paid for by water and sewer, because it, 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 uh, we get to benefit from picking up the debris that doesn't go into our storm system, so it works out with that clean water mitigation, so. But, yes, my first year here, there was some equipment purchased, but it was on, you know, there was capital in those, in those years.
Michelle?
So twenty-two, twenty-three, there were three different trucks that were budgeted for and purchased.
Michelle?
Yes.
I'd like to see the, uh, tree removal from one forty, I'd like to see that at two hundred.
Okay, I'll make a note of that, too.
Please. So there would be a sixty thousand dollar increase. But with eliminating of the thirty and eliminating of the fifteen, do you ever take, boosting a ten or fifteen thousand dollar increase?
Okay, yep, got it. Okay.
By the way, that's tree removal, that's not tree trimming, correct?
Tree removal, yes, the one forty, the, yes.
Two hundred.
To two hundred, exactly, yes, that's just tree removal in that line item.
Thank you.
Okay, next, if we don't have any more questions for DPW Highway, we have building maintenance on page nineteen.
And then I also see here, I'm sorry, before we move forward, I see we had a superintendent here that you wanted to have for seventy thousand dollars that you requested. Am I reading that right, DPW and Highway, seventy thousand, deputy director?
Deputy director.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Mr. Conrad, do you need a deputy director?
I would love one.
What, what would the deputy director assist you on?
I mean, I have, you know, one of the largest budgets, three departments, actually four if you count, you know, the street and, you know, two oh-two and two oh-three accounts. And I'm one person, I mean, we have a lot smaller departments that, that have multiple people, multiple directors. Um, I mean, I don't get one, I'll continue to do what I do, but I mean, you know, it would be great to have some help.
And I'd love to see a deputy director instead of an asset manager. Mayor, what do you, what do you think?
You guys approve it? I'm, I'm okay with whatever you guys come up with.
Are you, even with the raises for, uh, CDBG? Like those guys.
As long as you guys are fair with the rest of them.
Well, you've been fair with everybody, I mean, we just want you to be fair.
No, I am being fair.
Okay, good, then we're all being fair.
To all employees, not a select few.
I, I want to make that clear, I know you keep trying to say that, but we are fair with all employees and not just a select few either. But, um, the council unanimously legislated a body.
Council Chair, we're talking about DPW right now, can we go on?
I know, but, you know, you entertained it, so I'm, I'm.
No, you asked a question, I answered it, so there's no need to regurgitate.
So, Mayor, you would like a deputy director for DPW?
If, if it's needed, yes.
Well, I mean, you guys had it in there, I'm asking you, do you want that?
Obviously, yes.
Okay, obviously, I wouldn't know, I mean, because you didn't, you know, obviously, we've asked you to pay the, the CDBG employees, and you didn't.
And anyway, there's no need to regurgitate Council Chair.
I just wanted to rekindle it for you, because when you want things done, we, we deliver. When this council is asking for something, you obviously don't deliver.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We're on page nineteen?
Yes, building maintenance. So salaries are just in line with the personnel budget. No changes there, um, to what the personnel budget is. Retiree prior years, we have.
I'm sorry, once.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Um, the prior year retirement, five thousand, part-time, seven thousand. We have overtime at two hundred. Uh, clothing, again.
Hang on one second.
Absolutely.
Overtime was about a hundred and fifty-five thousand in average year.
Are we going up to two hundred? I know there's been pay raises, or there's not even.
So this year, we're projecting about one ninety-seven.
Again, we're gonna ask.
I'd like to see that I went sixty-five.
The right question would be, if we get you a deputy director, do you think the overtime numbers would change?
No.
No?
Can't stop emergencies, I mean, emergencies don't happen between, I've been doing this for nearly forty years, and emergencies never happen between seven-thirty and four o'clock. I mean, they always happen, most of the time before they even get home. You know, you're calling staff back because there's a new emergency.
How about, how about? How about more employees instead of a, a deputy director? Because if you had more employees, and you're able to designate people to do more things, that's what, you no longer need to have that deputy director instead of that one person.
I mean, yes, if you buy me more equip, can you get more equipment and more people, yes.
So you're saying you have enough employees, but you're short four.
And then the other issue is getting, getting them hired, I mean, this isn't a place that, I mean, you know, we've been short, we've been short staff ever since I've been here. I've never had full staff since I've been here. So, I mean, I, yes, if you can hire people, I will accept them.
Council Chair? Yeah, I mean, the economy, the, the, millions of dollars has been pumped into the economy, inflation's up, so unemployment benefits are up, so workers are scarce everywhere. What you're saying is, it rings true, and, you know, not a lot of people want to, uh, be a DPW worker or go down, like Curtis Whitmore always says, go down into the sewer and so forth. Is Curtis Whitmore retired, or?
Yes.
Yes, he is.
I'll just make that point, thank you.
Any other comments? You guys can continue.
Okay. Um, clothing, again, because of the contract, that was increased. Hospital and life insurance, one thirty-eight and twenty-four hundred, general government pension, one forty-four, FICA at fifty-nine thousand, supplies at fifty-five thousand. Um, materials and supply, there's a five hundred there, we could, I mean, you could honestly just combine it, but. Uh, utilities, fifty thousand. Contractual services at thirty thousand. Motor fuel at twenty-five thousand. Repair and maintenance of grounds, or is it two fifty? Repair and maintenance of equipment is at thirty. Training at five thousand. There was no capital outlay budgeted, um, and then capital outlay under five thousand, we have five thousand there.
Uh, I got a question. Mr. Conrad, you said sometimes the DPW assists um, with like the festivals and whatnot, wouldn't that be, like you said, picking up trash and emptying out the garbage, wouldn't that be custodian work?
Uh, no.
Why?
I guess it, it, it's work that's given to the general labors, because, you know, it's not in a building.
Outside of the building.
It's not, I mean, it, it's, there's no custodian at Canfield then, that would do this for the festival, there's, you know, I mean, it, it's setting up tents, I mean, it's taking down tents, it's, you know.
Okay, I'm, I'm just asking, I'm trying to learn.
It, it's generally work that is done by the general labors.
Okay, thank you, that was it.
And that is it for building maintenance.
Page thirty-eight, next.
That is correct. Major streets. So for major streets, first you have the revenues, and that is the gas and weight tax of about five point three million this coming year. And then we have interest of three hundred thousand. So the gas and weight tax estimates are from the state of Michigan. The interest, we're just budgeting a little bit lower, as we're doing in all the funds, hopefully, we'll outperform that. On page thirty-nine, we have the expenditures for major streets. We have a hundred and fifty thousand in the street highway construction. Um, and then we have street preservation of one point six million, because the additional work is going to be done in street preservation this year. Uh, we have three fifty in bridge repair and preservation. We have two point five million transferred to local roads, because you are using more to repair and construct local roads than you are major roads, and that's allowable to transfer up to fifty percent of your revenues to local. Then we have winter maintenance, we have budgeted at one ninety. We have not used that much the last two years, as you know, they have been very, very mild winters, so we kept it at one ninety. Admin and engineering, five twenty-five, and then traffic services, seventy-eight thousand.
So I have a question about admin engineering, why is it so high?
That, that's our work with WayTrim.
I thought we bought an in-house engineer to cut off on WayTrim.
I, I mean, there's a lot more work that goes into just what Ali can do, I mean, Ali can't service all the needs.
I understand, but what I'm looking at here is that it's only increasing. Because we didn't have an engineer.
No, we did.
Yes, we did.
No, we did have an engineer, I'm sorry.
That's a good point, why are we paying?
Yeah, but I mean, they said that by hiring an in-house engineer, it's gonna be incredibly different and lower.
Mayor, can you speak on that?
Which one? Council Chair?
Uh, which one, yeah, what number?
Admin and engineering.
Eight ninety-five.
Eight ninety-five.
Eight ninety-five, zero, zero, zero.
Admin and engineering. Admin and engineering.
So just to clarify, if you don't mind, this is...
One second, Michelle.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, actually, I, I just, I'm looking for, so Michelle wants to go on for that.
On page thirty-nine. Okay. Michelle, go ahead while the mayor's looking.
So, just to clarify, this is including weight trim, yes, but it's also including an allocation from the building and engineering for Mr. Dibbs' services.
And how much is that?
The allocation?
Yes.
I don't know off the top of my head. I'd have to add it up really quickly. Um, but it...
I'd like that number, please.
Okay, yeah, I can do a quick allocation.
I thought you were gonna give us those numbers today.
Sorry about that.
Again, can you email it to us today?
I, I can email you the numbers, yes. Um, so what you're asking is Mr. Dibbs' allocation or?
No, just like what's expected of the, of building and engineering, because like we, you're seeing it in so many different, uh, departments. So like, if, if he's expected to do X amount of work and, you know, allocate X amount of work from DPW, that's fine. How much is it? And how much are, how much are?
I'm sorry, Council Chair. Michelle, how much do we pay weight trim in total a year through everything?
We would have to go to the AP system and look at that over the last year. Um, we can definitely do that for you. Yeah. But a lot of this admin and engineering is internal cost as well as weight trim.
So Council Chair?
Yes.
So right now, for the last few years, we're doing a lot more work than what was done before, especially, you know, before we had an engineer that was hired, was a subcontract engineer. So obviously, we brought that in-house, but we still use, uh, a third party for some of the engineering work. But currently, the ci- our city engineer is engaged with a lot of, lot of work with water sewer, especially with the grants that was put forward in front of you guys for the last year or so. So the funding is there for an engineer. So if we, if the city engineer, uh, if DPW uses the city engineer, then we would take whatever funding from that budget. And that's one of the things that I've, I've been wanting to do for, for a while, especially as, as was mentioned earlier. If, uh, give you an example, uh, the festival, if you have, uh, DPW that is involved, I want to make sure that when you budget for a festival, we budget, you know, everything, not just the parks and wrecks. We gotta budget if DPW's involved or extra police presence, you know, the fire department. We have to make sure that we budget, you know, everybody's budget that has to go into that, like say, festival. So we know, so when they come, they say, hey, you know what? This thing has made a lot of money. But technically, it's not really making money, but again, it's not a revenue for the, the festival is not a revenue. It's for the citizens, for the residents. But we still want to account to see how much is actually spent on the festival. So we're doing the same thing here, but the city engineer, like everything else, if we use the city engineer to do something for DPW, then we will budget that portion. So we will be able to allocate money from that or CDBG or, uh, you know, building and maintain, uh, bu- a building department. So that's what we're trying to do, just to make sure that.
I like that. I like that, Mayor.
Also.
I'm sorry. And the reason why is because, you know, one, one of the things that we're, we're discovering a lot of gaps in the last twenty years that they haven't done, we're charging less money to do more work for certain permits. Like there's something, I mean, I don't wanna, again, I don't wanna throw in anybody under the bus, but we're paying, like say, thousands of dollars for something. We're collecting a few hundred for permits, which is ridiculous. So we're tr- we're trying to go back and visit everything, trying to make sure that when, when we, when a permit is pulled and there's, like say, thousands of dollars worth of work that has to get done, we have to account for that money and it's never been done before. So there's been a lot of wasted money in the last twenty years. That's something we're trying to grasp right now.
Thank you, Mayor.
My question is, I'm sorry, is that, wouldn't it be cheaper to just hire another engineer?
Well, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, so this is the major streets fund, right? That's, so the wage trims only, I just pulled it up, only about twenty thousand of that. The majority of it is actually the general fund reimbursing, or I'm sorry, this fund reimbursing general fund for any DPW and shared costs. So we've got about four hundred and eighty thousand of that in the budget for revenue that's going back to the general fund or cost reimbursement. So if you see the five twenty-five here, if you looked at the general fund budget, you'll also see a corresponding revenue. So any amount that's charged here is actually making the general fund better because you can use up to ten percent of your revenues to reimburse the general fund. So that's really what the majority of that five twenty-five is.
I, I know this is way off topic, but I'm about to tell you. I know they just say we did, uh, building and engineering and we gave the new position as a deputy intern, like deputy director position.
Yes.
I'd like it to stay office manager.
Okay.
Because in order to be the deputy director, she's gonna have to go through civil service and that, and she violates the charter and I don't want to be in violation of the charter. Just keep it as an office manager. She can then apply, keep it at the same pay rate, um, as an office manager.
I, I'm sorry, keep what pay rate?
That, that position that we talked about yesterday.
At, at the seventy-three that we talked about?
Yeah, or keep it at seventy. And then she gets a, becomes a deputy director, she can get her seventy-three.
Okay. Well.
Okay.
We'll make a note of that.
Please, but I do not want it to be called the...
Still office manager.
Keep it as an office manager because she went in as an office manager. All we did was agreed with the mayor to give her the pay raise. It is actually a violation of the charter to give her, uh, the deputy director position without her going through civil service. That is not our role. Our role is not to hire. There's only two hiring processes in the state of Dearborn Heights, civil service, X seventy-eight. That is it.
Council Chair?
Yes, Mayor.
And that person, again, you know, obviously, we're not gonna mention names. Uh, that person's on the civil, uh, service, uh, commission. So that person knows the process, obviously. We will go through the process. As mentioned, you know, when we go through the budget, you guys approve the budget, we will begin the process.
Yeah, but I don't wanna, I don't want that position name to be changed.
We'll, we'll leave it in the office personnel.
We'll leave it.
Yep.
Yeah, we, we will actually leave it though.
I don't want anybody to say that, oh, we, you know, they bypassed civil service and this. I got some phone calls yesterday, that's illegal, blah, blah, blah. I don't want to hear.
We'll leave it.
That's why you said yesterday, she said if she can get through civil service to be a deputy director, then it's a way.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is for now, even yesterday, I, I also told her, like, congratulations on being the new deputy director, interim deputy director. But she's not the interim deputy director because we don't have a deputy director position. There, there has to be open, published, go to, you know, the same process that we have to go through with every other person.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll make sure.
Oh, you can hear it. I mean, wh- what do you guys want to do? Seventy is fine. I mean, she was at forty-eight. We took her to seventy. Uh, and she gets the position, God willing, she can be at seventy-three.
Okay.
Thank you.
Perfect. Um, any more questions on major streets or can we move to local?
We can go to local.
Okay.
Councilman, are you done? Is that forty or forty-one?
Forty. Forty. So forty is your revenues. We have two point one million for the gas and weight tax. We have the two point five million that's being transferred over from major streets. And then we have twenty-seven thousand for interest.
What's the twenty-seven thousand for?
Um, it's interest income that you're receiving on your investments. So it's much lower than major because major has a lot more money.
Okay.
Than local. So that's what we're writing by moving the two point five million a year over.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. So then, if we move to page forty-one, we have your expenditures here. We have one point three million in street construction, one point five million in street repair and preservation, a hundred thousand in bridge repair and preservation, uh, one oh seven in winter maintenance, two oh two five.
What is winter maintenance, if you may ask me?
That's your, um, plowing, your salt, all that winter expenditures for the roads.
So the, the one we just went through, that was a different budget for different streets?
Yep. So, yep. So there are two different kinds, well, there's actually more than two, but there are two different kinds of roads that the city's responsible for. Major roads.
Which one would this one be? Would this be local?
These are your local. These are your side streets, your neighborhoods.
How much did we spend last year?
Last year, you spent, um, one, well, one fifteen last year in winter.
Why, I mean, the, the talk of the, the talk of the town is how Dearborn Heights isn't plowing. It's not that we're not, because maybe we're not budgeting it enough, because the question that I had with our director once again, well, you guys need to budget for it.
You, you definitely can.
Here, we're under budgeting again. I don't want to cut that. I don't want to cut services for residents. I don't, I don't, I don't, that's not what we want. I would like to see that at least at one twenty.
Okay. We can do one twenty.
I mean, if we spent one fifteen and things are only going up and we're paying people more an hour, why are we going down?
That's perfectly fine.
I'd even like to see it at one thirty.
Well, we could do that, uh, Council Chair, and move it from the major streets, uh, snow and ice removal, because we only spent seventy-nine thousand.
Major streets and like high, uh, fire routes and stuff like that.
No, we have one ninety. Only spent seventy-nine thousand this year.
Oh, okay.
Both of them have a dedicated funding source, so you're, you can up one without upping or without decreasing the other.
Great. I'd like to see that one at minimum, at minimum, a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty thousand. Residents shouldn't have to be struggling to get through their streets because we're not preparing ourselves or budgeting for it.
Do you want to do one forty then?
Let's go one fifty.
Okay. Going once?
Well, I mean, I mean, you still have a hundred and ninety thousand dollars remaining that you didn't use on your major streets.
No.
It's, it's...
You can. You can, you, can you transfer from one to the other?
Not above the two point five. However, you still have a significant fund balance in local streets. One fifty is not going to be an issue.
How much do we have in the local streets?
Currently, you have ending fund balance, last year was three, three point one million. We're thinking this year at the end, you'll be at about two point five million. So you have a hundred and fifty. I'm, the mo- the majority of that one fifteen is probably, probably about half of it is salt.
That one fifteen, you mean one fifty, not one fifty?
I'm sorry, last year's.
Yeah. Because I mean, another thing that Monsieur Director Conrad said to me was, well, you guys don't, you don't give me a budget for it, so now I'm giving you a budget for it. I don't want to hear you can't salt streets because nobody gave you a budget for it. I don't want to hear that it's not good for the roads, then buy the better stuff.
Okay.
But every other city's salting its roads. I don't want to be told we're not gonna salt our streets. I'm gonna, I'm gonna cut this clip and I'm gonna send it to you every time it snows. Thank you.
One fifty. Got it. Um, your admin engineering allocation's two oh two and your traffic services is one sixty-one.
What is?
Sorry, Ms. Lewis, if you go back to the snow and ice, it says through, uh, March thirty-first is one fifteen. Projected activity, at the end of this fiscal year, says one oh seven.
What happened was we ran this report and then an invoice came through that brought it over the one oh seven. So it, the projected activity is going to be, it's probably going to be slightly, yeah, it'll probably be about one twenty maybe. I mean, it, winter's over, so hopefully.
It still doesn't make sense. If it's one fifteen through March thirty-first and you said there's another invoice came, how much?
Oh, no, it was lower than one oh seven when we, and then we ran it and then an invoice kind of snuck its way through after I ran it originally. So we just didn't update that number.
So we're required to buy eighty percent of the salt we go out to bid for. So each year, as we get near, you know, March and April, we have to look at, okay, you know, we need to buy X number of tons to meet our minimum requirement with the contract. So that's why, you know, there's a late invoice coming in that was to meet our minimum requirement for the salt purchase.
Well, you got a bigger, you got a bigger budget now for salt.
Right, but this, that, that, the reason why Michelle's numbers are the way they are is because of that.
So how much was that invoice that came in late?
I would have to check.
Yeah, it was, it was pretty good because we got like five loads, I think, to, to fill our minimum requirement.
I'm just, the way I'm looking at it, I mean, if we used one fifteen through March thirty-first and another invoice came through, so it should be, the one oh seven should be like one something, not one oh seven, right? Like one twenty or whatever?
So...
Unless...
No, it says one fifteen.
Yeah, through March thirty-first.
Mm-hmm. And so I, I doubt that something will come through, um, after, there was about thirteen thousand dollars.
So that one oh seven should be like, uh...
Well, one, one fifteen is what you've spent.
Okay.
I doubt you'll spend anything more because it's winter. Um, so last year, nothing came in after March.
So that one oh seven shouldn't be there?
It should be one fifteen.
Just like we spent.
Yep, exactly.
Makes sense now.
Yep, no problem. Um, so that is it for highway, for major and local streets. Anything else on that or we can move to the water and sewer?
I'm good.
Okay.
We're good.
Water and sewer, page fifty-seven. So there's a lot here. Let me know when you're ready.
Fifty-seven?
Fifty-seven. And we'll start with the revenues. All right. So the first line item we have is the federal ARPA funding for those water mains that we had talked about during the last study session. Um, after that, we have shut-off charges, uh, twenty-five. We have, uh, mechanic maintenance service of sixteen. Then we have your water and sewer charges. We have them at eleven-six for water, thirteen-seven for sewer. Those are at the current rates currently. So there will be a water and sewer rate study that is going to be done. They'll propose new rates, but currently, it's at the old rates.
The water rates won't approve, won't increase without this approval.
Exactly, which is why.
But I feel like the water rates have already been just going up. I mean, it's insane.
This does not include an increase right now.
Council Chair?
But there's, it doesn't include it because there hasn't been a hearing.
Absolutely.
But there's gonna be a hearing coming up, which means you guys are anticipating one.
We're doing a study right now, so you're, we'll go into what your water rates are increasing from the county in just a moment, and then we can talk about that.
Councilman?
The, the, um, River Oaks Pond Assessment Revenue is, in parentheses, is that because it was not collected?
Um, so no, that was the twenty-two, twenty-three activity.
Saying it's done.
So that's done. So the reason why it was negative is because it was chargebacks last year in twenty-two, twenty-three, but that's not, it's not being collected anymore this year or next year.
You say chargebacks, meaning?
Property tax that went to, um, the county that were foreclosed and had to be charged back.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. So then, after sewer disposal charges, we have sale of meters. That's at six hundred and twenty. The non-residence, uh, user surcharge is one seventy-five. Wayne County Industrial Surcharge is at fourteen. The water bill penalties is at five thirty-seven. Water bill penalties that go on the tax roll is at four fifteen. NSF fees are at four thousand. Interest on investments of four hundred. Um, interest on the escrow construction account is eighty-six hundred. Uh, reimbursement from MMRMA, three hundred thousand. The CSO levy is sixty-five hundred. Um, this larger item, the SRF Fund Downriver, that is all of the projects that are being done. That would be loan proceeds, grant proceeds, and use of current, um, unspent bond proceeds. Uh, miscellaneous income of seventy-nine thousand. So anything on the revenues?
I'm sorry, what was the Fund Downriver again?
Sure, that thirty-eight million? So that includes your grant proceeds of those projects of about twenty million. It includes your unspent bond proceeds of seven, the, um, ARPA money, um, that was being used and, uh, loan proceeds for the SRF loan that is coming up.
This is the money that we're putting down plus the grant?
Correct. Yep. So it's grant and loan proceeds.
How can you add the ARPA money on top, plus add it one more time?
I'm sorry, not, not the city's ARPA money, the state ARPA money that's being, mm-hmm, that's being allocated. So it's not your ARPA.
We're using from ARPA money for that?
You're, you're using your ARPA money, yes.
Right.
For the water mains, but you're using state ARPA grants in this thirty-eight million. It's just call, it's from the state's allocation.
I mean, we're, we're using the state plus we're using our money, ARPA money.
Correct. Plus then you have loan proceeds and they make you account for those in revenue. Correct, plus then you have loan proceeds, and they make you account for those in revenues. And there's an offsetting expenditure, obviously.
And I understand, just it feels like we're adding our ARPA money twice, the thirteen million on top, plus whatever we're using for the, uh, fund.
No, the thirteen million is our, the city's ARPA money.
Okay.
The amount that's down here is the state ARPA grant, so it's, it doesn't have anything to do with yours. Yep. Anything else for revenues? Okay. So, the next page is fifty-eight. And that is, um, the water and admin in general. So, one thing to note here, if you're trying to compare last year's budget, this year's budget, we moved all of the salaries to five thirty-six department because it's, just makes more sense to include, include all of the departments in one salary line item. So, you'll see that the salaries look like they really went up, but if you compare them and add the other departments, they really didn't. Um, same thing with part-time, overtime, um, hospital insurance, we just moved everything to five thirty-six, just to make more sense there. Um, so, going through those, your salaries do match what's in the personnel budget. Uh, retirement prior years, eleven thousand, part-time of thirty-four thousand, overtime of five twenty-one. Clothing, fourteen thousand, hospital insurance, four twenty-two.
Why, why the overtime is so much?
So, again, that is including the other departments that are rolled in to that. So, it's not only what the one forty-one, it's also what was in department.
Such an enormous increase.
It looks like it, but if you look at department five thirty-one, or five thirty-eight, there was overtime of three seventy-five. So, if you add.
Which department is that?
Um, it's on page sixty, so, department five nine-two, five three-eight.
So, we just moved the overtime from that line item up to five thirty-six.
So, the water, the actual water department, uh, water tapping and installing?
Yep, so we moved.
Hundred and twenty-one thousand?
So, that was three seventy-five this year, and we moved that up to five thirty-six, department five thirty-six.
So, Director, we have twenty-seven people right now, and we still, still we're missing, we're still like short-staffed? In the water department?
Water's, water's short for labors, and we're going to be shortly short a heavy equipment operator.
Why are we waiting on the higher people, is it, are the positions listed?
They've been, they've been trying to hire people since I got here. And just people.
Pay rate?
People, I mean, they increased the salaries this, this last contract, um, I mean, we'll see. Uh, they just went to a job fair, um, just recently, so we'll see. I mean, to be honest, people aren't interested in doing, especially the water work, that, the, the water, I mean.
I mean, it's also the short five people, it's also putting a lot of, a lot on, on the workers that are there, even with overtime. I mean, it's just, it's, it's not fair for them, but.
I, 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 I agree with you one hundred percent, I mean, uh, if it wasn't for the staff that we currently have, I mean, we would be in serious trouble.
I'm not, I'm, I, I, I only.
You've, you've met my staff.
I've only got good things to say about them, but if they're understaffed like that, you have no staff. If you're saying we're five, we're gonna be five, they're gonna be five under, you're putting a lot of pressure on their staff, eventually they are gonna leave. Because people can only do so much.
I, I agree, I, I, I don't know what we have to do to attract the right people to.
I mean, don't we use a staffing service in the city for?
Yeah, I, I mean, like I say, they, they went to a job fair.
And how did that go?
Last week, I haven't heard the results from it, but.
Was there any results?
I, well, I don't know, I mean, that, that, I, I haven't heard the results from, from HR.
Are they listed on the city's website, the positions?
We've been trying to hire people since I've been here and, you know.
Please proceed.
Okay. Okay, we were at, um, I think, general government pension at three hundred eighty-one thousand, your OPEB prefunding at two hundred thousand, um, your FICA at one forty-five, supplies at eighty-two-five, utilities fifty-nine-five, um, dues and memberships, thirty thousand, professional and contractual services there at two fifty.
What's that for, Director?
Professional services?
Um, again, that's, uh, is that five, that's, uh, seven, or eight-seven, eight-one-seven, yeah. So, that, that's all of our engineering consultants doing, you know, our, our document for our L forty-two, L forty-one, all those projects, all our water main projects. You know, again, we rely on Way Trim and their staff to do these projects and put, package them up for us. I mean, they have the staff with the expertise, they, you know, they can throw a lot of people at it in a short period of time.
Why are we increasing by o- over a hundred thousand?
I, I, are we consolidating those too?
So, the hundred thousand is because there are so many grant projects that are going to be underway this year, so we increased that amount. From one forty-five.
Who came up with the estimate?
So, that was in conjunction with Mr. Conrad and Mr. Gibb.
What line item are you guys looking at?
Eight-seventeen.
Five-three-six, eight-seventeen, and that is the professional and consulting.
That's also for Way Trim, it's going up from one forty-five to two fifty.
I mean, guys, that's, that's, I know we're doing a lot of work, but it's a lot of money, a hundred thousand dollars that we're giving to Way Trim.
We need their expertise.
Expertise, do you see the, some of the contractors that they brought over to do some of our work?
It's not, that, that's not the contractors, I mean, that's, that, that's a little bit.
Hold on, please, Sir Conrad, thank you. What I'm trying to tell you is, some of these contractors that they brought over that have done work for us are not the best contractors, and I'll tell you something, look at the fire department, that's a prime example, we use their expertise. Way Trim is the reason why our building is the way it is today, and they're gonna say that they gave it to a different company, bull crap. So, you don't got to talk to me about expertise, and we shouldn't be giving them more money to say, hey, because, you know, we got an extra lot of jobs, you owe us jobs, if anything. We're in this position today with the fire department because of Way Trim, I blame nobody else. I don't blame Noah Pass administration, I don't, I don't, we never had an engineer, we had Way Trim.
Council chair, sorry, I'm gonna go back to, uh, the, about us hiring, twenty-nine thousand dollars a year. McDonald's paid more than this.
What are you talking about?
For the water department, there's gonna be short five people.
There's short five people because they're paying them twenty-nine grand a year?
That's, that's, that's my point.
What do you see the twenty-nine?
On their, on their application on the city's website, our, our opportunities. That's, that's your problem, is that nobody wants to work for free.
Nothing, nothing from the audience, please, Rachel. Councilman, what do you want to do?
About what, uh? At two fifty?
Look, I'm okay with leaving it, uh, but I mean, I'm gonna leave the councilman to, you know, initiative of the argument. I, I'm just, I'm not impressed with Way Trim personally, I'm not impressed with Way Trim at all. And Mr., Mr. Deeb knows how I feel about them, Van knows how I feel about him, Vague, whatever his name is, uh, he knows how I feel about him, um.
Councilman, I'm what, you want to do two hundred?
We could do two hundred, let's do two hundred.
What line, that's the eight seventeen?
What line are we at?
Eight seventeen.
Okay, I made a note of that.
Thank you.
The next line item is, um, contractual services, that's at one twenty, and that is just an average of the prior three years. So, last, this year, it seems like it is coming a little low, but the average is about one twenty.
Who's that for? What do we use that for?
That's for anybody that we hire to do, uh, all of our external work, you know, if we have to, if we get a water main repair that we can't do, we have to get a contractor that has a bigger excavator because it's deeper. You know, that's where we pay those things, so this is for specialty services.
Next line is just your general fund allocation, so that nine hundred and fifteen thousand is what is reimbursed to the general fund for services that they provide. The next line item, um, is motor fuel, and that is at one twenty-five. Again, it's a trend rate there. Your insurance, about four forty is the average cost there. Um, your underground storage tank liability, same as in the streets. Um, the next line, repair and maintenance, building and grounds of nineteen-five. And then there's repair and maintenance of equipment in, for fifteen. The training is at five thousand, and then you have depreciation on your, um, infrastructure and equipment of three point two million dollars. All right, if no questions, we can move on to page fifty-nine.
I'm, I'm so sorry.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
Can you tell me how much money we have in our, our water fund?
Money is in cash that we have right now, and.
Everything for the water fund.
We'd have.
I think it was eleven million you said last time, I just want to confirm.
No, she said like sixteen.
Seventeen.
So, so you have money that is in regular checking, and then you have money that's segregated for bond repayment. Um, so, we'd have to actually go pull all of those accounts, um.
Michelle, I, I want to be as nice and respectful as possible. I feel like every time I ask for something, it's like either we're not getting it, or it's so difficult to get that information.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think this is something we requested almost a month or two ago, when we initially asked about the, how much money is in there. Now, we're being seen, you know, one here is sixteen, I thought I heard a twelve, eleven or twelve, he here is seventeen. Now, it's like, oh, but you have to pay off these bonds, so really you don't have it, how much money do we have?
So, are you, you're talking about unrestricted or just in total cash?
I want to know after we have to pay off our bond or whatever, we don't have, what do we have in total of profits?
We can divide restricted, unrestricted altogether, so we'll know.
Okay, I can get that information and give it to you.
Okay, what?
I, I can do it by the end of the week, for sure, or have.
What about, what about the personnel to see what they're paid in the past, because I, I know you requested.
We are working on that, yes.
Do you know how much longer?
Um, when I talked to the comptroller, we were saying before the public hearing happens, so.
I want to wait before the public hearing happens, because that's going to determine if we're approving this budget or not. I don't care if this budget is approved or not.
So, that, that's next week, though.
I mean, we've been asking for it from the beginning of the budget hearing, from the beginning of the budget hearing, I've asked, even before the budget, actually, before the budget hearing, I went into your office and I spoke with you and your deputy director. I mean, I, I don't. No, no. I don't want every single employee. The directors and deputy directors, and I want to see.
We'll update the personnel sheets this week.
Please, like, I want it before the, I'd like it before the weekend. Like, I never, no, I don't need every employee. Congratulations to all of our TPUAM and, and police and fire and, and all of our union employees that got raises, we saw those. We, we approved their tentative agreement, everybody got a raise in the city except for CDBG, but that's a whole different discussion. You did.
I did.
You did.
Did.
Okay, you got, you got a raise when you first started the job, and then nobody else got raises, and we were not giving anybody a raise, so you did. When you first got your job, you got your raise, Mr. Conrad, I was here, and everybody was so happy, and my, my words verbatim were, if you aren't good, you pay good, so we, I'm all for giving everybody that pay raise, and we give everybody a pay raise. If you want us to pull that back up for you, we will, you did get a pay raise. You're now requesting another pay raise now. We have not said. Yeah, did the union, did we, remember when you guys went?
I, I'm not asking for one.
Yeah.
I've just, you know, the comment was made that everybody got a raise, so I just.
You got a raise when you first started here, sir, you must not remember, but I didn't want to give you or any other director a raise until we paid our union employees. Remember that, last year you guys requested for a raise, and we said, no, settle all the contracts first, and they said, you guys are negotiating.
My, my pay rate since the first day I got here to today is the same.
Great, guess what, when, you must have been the only person that.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not complaining about that, I'm just, when you said.
You got, you got a great pay raise, you, you got a great pay rate.
My pay raise is.
Yeah.
My, my rate of pay since my first day here has not.
Well, believe it or not, I don't think you remember this, but when John Salmy was still here, he got the first chunk of the pay raise, and then he got a different job, and so you inherited his pay raise. Thank you.
I mean, he's still getting a raise this year too.
Yeah, five percent.
Five percent.
Oh, really? My wife will be happy. Council chair?
Yeah.
Michelle, on the bonds, uh, uh, for the water, what do, interest rate are we paying, is the city paying on those bonds? Do you know offhand?
Don't know off the top of my head, I can pull it really quickly, though.
Isn't it just under seven percent?
Of course, now my internet decides not to work.
Because we're drawing money out of, um, that, you know, we're, we're not using that money and we're paying interest on the bonds.
So, your, your capital, yep. So, your capital improvement bond, it is, and of course, like I said, my internet decided to stop working, but, um, that, that is a lower interest rate than normal, uh, but than your average. Um, so, that was at a time where the interest rates are really low. Um, so, I would say it's probably about three-ish percent. Um, you also, though, have debt through the county that you're also paying interest on. So, that, I don't know, that percentage, um, but when I'm able to, I can get you the interest rate for that.
Okay, and that money's being held for no reason because there's a worry that it's not, we won't be fiscally sound, something like that?
The bond language requires you to put the next year's payments into a separate account. So, that is in a separate account, um, that's the only money that's being set aside currently. Um, but there's also the unspent bond proceeds of seven million, that's in a separate account as well, because of the bond language.
Okay, so, we're paying like three percent or possibly more on that seven billion?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Uh, let's go.
Move along, okay. So, department five thirty-seven, we have.
This is page.
Oh, page fifty-nine. We have your water and sewer supplies of two hundred and fifty thousand.
I'm sorry, I, I do have a question I do want to ask.
Sure.
Which one, we're going back to fifty-eight?
So, about, about, uh, about the water department.
In general, or?
In general, so, like, your grants, I asked that the other day about the grants, like, don't we have to have a contract and approval to put this money in?
So, the grants that you have here, you're approve, you've approved the spending plan, which is why we have.
But how about they deny us, like they did before on the water meters hat?
Sure, if they deny you, then you won't include the, you won't incur the expenses. So, the way the water grants work is you don't actually start spending on the grant until you actually have it, and then, as you spend, they reimburse you, so you don't spend the whole thirteen million at once?
So, so, for example, we had, we had a ten million dollar grant, we ended up getting fifty percent of it. So, right now, if we're, we're budgeting for that ten million, and we don't get that grant, um, why is it budgeted for that, is it, I mean?
So, I don't believe they will spend at all because of the way the state grants work, unless they have the grant in hand.
But, again, the budget is still budgeted for it.
Right, yes, so, this is what the state has told us that they're going to give us. Obviously, you won't start spending until you have that signed agreement.
I was honestly told, I spoke to a couple CPAs, I was told otherwise, that we don't have this in writing, approved and signed on, I don't know why we're adding it into the budget.
You can choose to take it out of the budget, and then you'll have to amend it when they come up.
I would rather take it out and amend it.
That's.
Because when you have a letter of understanding and not an approval, it's two different things.
Sure, mm-hmm. It's up to you, whatever you want to do, it is budgeted for a revenue and an expenditure, so there's no net effect, but.
I, I would rather take it and amend it as we get it, because let's say that, uh, hypothetically, a million dollars, they say, hey, we got a million dollar grant, and end up getting a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, we're gonna be in the same limbo that we were with the water meters. I'd rather get the grant, get the approval, contract signed, council approve it, gets them, you can amend the budget. And that's, and, and that's how you balance your budget. And that's, and that's how you balance your budgets.
I can live with that.
Yeah, let's go ahead and remove. Actually, if all the grants have not been approved, I would actually like them removed.
Okay.
And then as they come for approval in front of us, we would know exactly what we're getting, dollar for dollar, not guessing. Because we can apply for a $10 million fire truck grant right now.
It just happened we'll go 100% and I'll end up being 50%.
And this is my point. We're, we're betting here we're getting 100%, but these are not approved contracts.
I agree.
I, I would like, I'd like them, unless they are approved and it's the contract's been signed, like the grant money's coming in. I would like them approved across the, removed from the budget across the budget.
We can do that.
And then can we get the new numbers when they're off of that, please?
We can, we can definitely do that.
I think it'll make the budget a lot unconfusing.
Yes, more understanding.
Okay.
Because honestly, and, and I'm just using the water meter. I keep using that as an issue. Verbatim, they said we got every single meter covered on this grant.
Okay.
That was not the truth.
Okay.
And I don't want this happening when, when we're putting a dilemma. We, we need this, we need this funding.
That's perfectly fine. We can, we can take those out. Absolutely. Okay.
And you know, I'm, I'm so sorry. Do you know how many grants we have total? So I could just write it down. So.
So for the water, there's a 38 million.
Okay, so 38 million is going to be removed out of the, the budget.
It will be, yes. The net effect was zero.
38 million.
Million, yes.
Okay.
The net effect was zero, so.
Right.
No matter what, yeah.
I mean, I'm saying ac- across every department, even DPW, CDBG, any department that has a grant that's not approved, ready to go.
Yes.
We want to pull back and as soon as you get the approval, we'll amend the budget.
So the only thing that we do not have approval for, other than the water department, is the two fire grants that are in the general fund. And that's 1.9.
The fire grants, they needed approval from council to get the approval. That, that already came in front of us for the truck.
Okay, so then has your approval?
And then the fire station, the grant you're talking about, they haven't even submitted plans yet. So there is no approval. We're already aware of that.
Okay.
But those should not be included in the budget.
We can take them out. Yep. Yeah, both of those.
Yep.
Okay.
Because those are restricted funds.
They are.
In order for us to approve to the state, we can build the fire station. We have to submit to them a site, plans.
Yep.
And our overall, our overall schedule for it, we, we've done that.
That's fine. Just as long as you understand that it will have to come for a budget amendment.
And that's perfectly fine.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Is, is that good?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, moving along. We have, I think we're at E Course Creek, O and M at 560,000.
What, what line item is that?
Um, 592537927.
What are the last three?
927000. It's the third line item now.
What page? 59?
59.
I'm sorry, this guy took me back to 58.
No, you're fine.
I'm on 59. I don't know what you're talking about. Came right back.
E Course Creek, I see it.
Yeah, E Course Creek, we've got 560,200.
Hold on, I'm sorry. This is line item.
It's the third.
927.
And we have 560,000.
Yes, yeah.
Why are we going to use them 560,000? Using would be like $10 million. We should have used all of our ARPA money on that, but that's.
Well, unfortunately, ARPA doesn't cover the.
The E Course Creek?
It, water and sewer distribution systems is what it would cover.
Those are natural disasters. I would definitely believe it is.
Can we up that?
It, it's a sticky subject.
Let's go to our ass first.
Um, okay. You, you can do whatever you want with it if you'd like to up it.
Counselor Chair.
Oh, actually, yeah, you're right. The O and M is directed by Wayne County, so. That's true. It, it's what the county charges you.
Councilman Constant, you hit something?
Briefly, so would, if you know, would we be able to use ARPA money for like the new air conditioning unit on the Justice Center?
No, unfortunately not. It's, the infrastructure is very specific to water and sewer infrastructure.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome. I wish we could because that would be good for them. CSO retention basin, we have at 575. The water purchase, so water purchases is going up about 8.6% from Great Lakes Water.
8.6% for what?
From Great Lakes Water Authority. That is your increase for this year.
It's like robbery.
So hold on, we already have the highest water rates in the country. You're telling me right now, aside from the tree issues that I'm having, I got to start answering to people's water bills?
So that, this isn't what you're passing on right now. This is just what you're being charged extra.
Good. We're not going to raise it on the residents. We're going to eat it up for a couple of years.
So that, that's what your increase is this year.
It's crazy, man. Water, water is a right.
I mean, why so much from now till the end of this fiscal year? We're talking $2 million.
So the way that they bill you, it's in, it's a couple of months behind. So that's why at this point, there was only five bills at the point where we ran this. So there, there's still another seven to go.
So technically it's not.
The other way around. There were seven, there's still another five to go.
So, so is it technically not through March 31st, you're saying?
It was the bills that we had been recei, that we had received through March 31st.
But not the actual.
But they're a couple of months behind, yep. So then your sewer, sewage disposal charges, we also increased those to 8.6%. Wayne County has not released their rates yet for Rouge Valley. That probably won't come until after year end. So we just assume the same increase as Great Lakes Water Authority for that in DUA.
Year end as of 2024 or fiscal year end?
Fiscal year end, yes. Usually it comes just right after your fiscal year end. Then we have repair and maintenance. Our equipment is 78,000. Based on Councilman Saab's request, we will take out the 17. Then we have emergency water and sewer repairs of 200,000. Capital outlay equipment is 450. That was just the department had a request. The 13 million, again, we're taking that out until we have a signed agreement. Now the CSO L421 project, that is going to be, we can take that out as well.
The 17 million dollar water replacement, that's, that's a grant, right?
The 17, yeah. So we're taking it out. Yeah, the capital outlay for that.
Well, look, granted, we play that we get.
Right. So I can leave, if you would like, the 13 million in there because that's the ARPA money.
You should leave that.
Okay, then that's what I will do. Yep.
Hey, Maggie.
Okay. And so then that's it for the 537 department. Good.
We're going to 61 or is it?
Page 60.
Or 60.
60. Yep. So page 60, after we removed all the salaries from Department 538 and moved it up to 536, you only really have two line items there, which is water supplies and repair and maintenance. So.
What could we be potentially using supplies in there?
So you haven't used that many in the past, obviously, if you see that.
That's what I'm saying.
Yep.
I mean, we used 791 dollars.
So that, that just means that we haven't bought any new taps and sleeves lately for the water tap.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking. I'm not saying I'm removing it. I'm just asking.
No, I mean, it's, it, it's a thing, you know, I mean, we, we try to be prudent in purchasing when we need them. So I mean, if they're not there, it's because we haven't purchased them and we haven't, you know, but we're coming into water tap season, you know, where everybody's building their homes and going to be requiring new water services and things like that. So now is when we're going to be starting using them and we'll have to replace them. So, you know, we keep a stock. As we use the stock, we replace the stock.
Okay, page 61 is water meter reading and repair. So then we have meter supplies at 75,000. Contractual services, they're at just $100. Repair and maintenance at 5,000. And then we have capital outlay for water meters. We currently have a 13.2. That was part of that grant. So we can remove the grant funded portion. Until we get approval, obviously. If no questions, we can move on to page 62.
Sure.
Okay, page 62, we have contractual services there of 200,000. That is just any maintenance that can't be done in-house. It historically has not been at 200, but you never know. Then you have contractual service for cleaning and lining. So that's the cleaning and lining of your lines. Repair and maintenance of equipment of 6,000. And then capital outlay is 297,530. And that is because what was approved last year has not been purchased yet. So we just moved it into this year. Are we good with that department? All right. And finally, page 63. This is all debt. So your debt payments on both your capital improvement bonds and your county debt is all included here. This is all information from the amortization schedules.
Okay.
Anything else?
We're paying off two bonds? We already paid off two bonds?
So those will, those are paid off this current year and then they'll be done.
So then will we see a lower taxes for our residents?
Those ones were not tax financed. They were just.
Will we see lower water rates?
After we do the study, potentially, tho- those will fall off, but then you'll have new.
New bonds.
Debt payments that you'll be paying on. So. And honestly, 100, 100,000 divided by 28,000, $3 a year.
$3 goes a long way near my eyes.
Pay for half my coffee.
Where's the coffee for?
Wow.
The mayor's favorite coffee place.
Okay. Probably not.
Any other questions from any council members regarding the ones that we just went to? Councilman? Uh, before we go to comments, I see our Madam Treasurer's had her hand up. I just wanted you guys to finish. Michelle sees a big smile there.
What? Oh, dear.
Hello, good evening, honorable council members, council chair. First of all, I want to commend Councilman Saab for bringing back to the, the conversation that we should not be budgeting for grants that we haven't received or haven't had signed contracts for. And that's a gimme by the Michigan Municipal League. If you ever go to any of their budget trainings or, you know, the priority based budget, they say never count anything like that in your budgets until it's done. Same thing with selling, you know, city property. You don't count that in your budget until you have the money coming in. So Councilman Saab, thank you for that. The second thing I wanted to say is the River Oaks assessment was levied and was collected. I thought somebody had said that it wasn't, so I just wanted to correct that. And then I wanted to tell you for your water, if we're talking about actual cash on hand in the bank, I will tell you that you have 13 million invested with Morgan Stanley. You have a little over 6 million with Comerica in the checking account, the one that is the lockbox for us. 1.6 in Comerica pool account and about 4 million, I believe. That's the only one I'm questioning in my brain right now, but with Chase OM water. But I, what I want to tell you is I will send you all the actual balances tomorrow morning when I get into the office. Because it sounds like you're interested. So I just wanted to tell you that.
48.6 million dollars. Okay. Any questions for the public?
I can give you the restricted dollar figures too, if you want that later.
Please go ahead.
Just want to make sure you guys are done. Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. A few questions, specifically as a member of the Public Safety Committee. We've met with a lot of people. We were talking actually with Director Smoke today, having a lot of great meetings. But it was kind of a surprise to hear that we got the Safe Routes grant. I knew about the Safe Streets one, the $400,000 one. The other one, when was that? Do you happen to know when that was awarded or if it was a state one or anything?
I couldn't tell you either. Sorry.
Okay. If, if somebody could get back to me or the committee, the committee to Margaret with that information, that'd be awesome. With major and local streets, again, as part of the committee, I was doing research on this. We're required to spend 1% of major and local streets on non-motorized. And it's over a 10-year rolling period, I believe. Do you know if we've done that in the last 10 years or if we potentially have funds there that could be used for the non-motorized infrastructure? So that the, this thing that the ci, the citizens are big on right now. So I was curious about that.
So it is, oh, can I?
Yes.
Can I answer? So it is something that is monitored every year when we filed the Act 51 report.
Okay.
Um, the city has been spending on some non-motorized, but it's something that definitely can be used.
Okay, so that might be something for us to discuss probably with you, Mr. Conrad.
Yeah, I mean, would that qualify like the, if we have matching funds for the, for the Safe Routes to school?
For the Safe Streets.
That's a non-motorized activity.
From what I've read, yeah.
You know, because I know we, we use the ADA ramps when we do those upgrades, whenever we're, you know, those go on our non-motorized stuff. So I would think, you know, that we'll easily be able to use that 1% when we do our match for the.
Yeah, that was one of the things I was thinking about using it for. So yeah, great. I'm glad we're on the same brainwave there. I think that was the only questions I had directly and then the rest was comments. Tree survey, I'm fully in support of that. I think that that would actually be a really smart thing because then we could get to more of a maintenance schedule with trimming the trees and actually know what we're doing. Because if we don't have that data, we can't make a strategic plan for the long run.
You have 30 more seconds in your comments.
Thank you. I, I'm almost done anyway. The last thing would just be that the mayor needs to stop telling so many jokes and making me laugh so much because he has definitely given people raises without bringing it to council. It's in the lawsuit and the documents clearly show that he gave, I believe it was 30% raises to three employees without council approval. So I, I'm sorry for laughing, but it was such a good joke, I couldn't help, help myself. So thank you so much, guys. Have a good night. See you next Tuesday.
Thank you.
Counselor Chair. Yeah, Councilman. And just so we're clear, the, I never said the River Oaks extra assessment was not levied. It was levied on time. Per the treasurer, she even said it was a staff error, but it wasn't levied with the tax bill. It should have been levied.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments? Any on Zoom? Anybody? Hearing none? Motion? No, no motion either. Thank you very much, everybody. Have a nice evening.